Recording in progress.
No. Cash.
Wait around slideshow at some point. So, um, the river is, um, wants to have a table about their duties. We have to talk about their duty and our M L A. So I sent it over to Abby, but I forgot to copy it because I'm not sure. I'm not sure how we do this. I mean, but it sounds like there's a community feel after the M L Ps. So anyway, I'll forward that to you and Abby. Well, if it's a new thing, it's you. If it's like already out of town or excuse me. Oh, yeah, you apply here. What's that? Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, we have five or six. Only got thirty-five out of the side for eight. In the rain, man. I built them on the side of the car. They're so big. If you build them, they'll go on. Very, very content. But anyway, if you have any, um, suggestions on locations, like driving somewhere or anything. And then the tiers are up right before the event. Four, four, down two sides. She and I go with her. She and I always went to see my sister. We didn't know each other. Yeah.
Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for January 7th of 2025. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Exactly. Welcome, everybody. It's great to see you. Happy New Year. Uh, it's great to see so many people here with us today. We've got a very special event of swearing in some officers and, uh, the leadership of the Police Department as well. Uh, with that, um, I will invite Chief Wong to, uh, approach, uh, and, uh, let's get this party started.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochbar, and members of the Council. I am pleased to introduce four newly hired police officers to you and our residents. We'll also publicly recognize and celebrate the promotion and appointment of two outstanding individuals in the Police Department. Mayor Farrell will then administer the oath of office. The first four officers standing furthest away from me are entry-level police officers who recently graduated from the Police Academy and are currently in our field training program. The two officers nearest to me, um, are being promoted within the Police Department. These officers are quality individuals and people of integrity, and we're fortunate to have them as part of our team and serving our community. Uh, introduction of new officers. First officer is Christian Butron. Christian was, Christian was born in Fresno, raised in San Diego. Prior to joining the City of Federal Way, Christian served as an intelligence analyst in the United States Army. He has also worked in many other areas related to customer service. Christian earned a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from the University of Maryland. Christian is married and has a daughter named Aurora. When he's not at work, he enjoys hiking, spending time with his family. Christian graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on November thirteenth. Next, we have Officer Bailey Locke. Bailey grew up in Orange County, California. Before being hired by the City of Federal Way, he worked as a consultant for Larson Consulting Associates and as a station area manager for Amazon.com. He has an associate degree in kinesiology and bachelor's degree in general studies. When not at work, Bailey enjoys spending time with his dog. Bailey graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on November thirteenth. Next, we have Officer Andrew Dai. Andrew grew up in Kent, graduated from Kent Meridian High School. Before joining the City of Federal Way, Andrew served in the United States Navy for 21 years, transferring from active duty to leading chief petty officer to Fleet Reserve. He's been deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan and has had several submarine deployments. Andrew and his wife Lindsay have two children, a five-year-old son, and a three-year-old daughter. When not at work, he enjoys rock climbing and working on cars. Andrew graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on November twenty-seventh. Next, we have Officer Brian Kerrigan. Prior to joining the City of Federal Way, Brian worked as a senior training manager and senior program manager for Amazon Web Services. He also served in the infantry, as an infantry sergeant in the United States Army, earning a Purple Heart while deployed in Iraq. He has a master's degree in journalism and a bachelor of arts in interdisciplinary arts and sciences. When not at work, he enjoys spending time with his wife Andrea and their children. He also plays the guitar, enjoys fly fishing. Brian graduated from the Basic Law Enforcement Academy on December thirty-first. Now we'll move forward to promotions and appointment. Uh, first, we have Corporal Ricardo Cuellar. He's being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Uh, Rick was raised in California, where he was a winning wrestler in the Fresno area. Before law enforcement, Rick attended Fresno College, volunteered as a youth pastor and men's ministry leader in his church, and worked as a learning and development manager. Rick was hired as an entry-level police officer in Federal Way in 2017. He was a patrol officer, working all three shifts and all days of the week. After gaining some experience, he was selected as a field training officer, training new officers after they graduated from the Basic Police Academy. Rick was selected for our total station, FARL Team, which diagrams and documents major accidents and crime scenes. He was selected as a school resource officer. Rick began volunteering as a wrestling coach at Todd Beamer High School and continues with Beamer Wrestling to this day. You may have seen him feature in our social media page, pages in February of 2024 after the Beamer coaching staff was awarded the North Puget Sound League Coaching Staff of the Year. Thank you. I had a hard time flipping the page there and appreciate that. Uh, in 2021, Rick was selected as one of the six Federal Way police officers on the regional SWAT team. He participated in many complex and dynamic situations and was an active member of the SWAT team until this promotion. In 2023, Rick was selected as a police corporal. In that role, he mentored officers and supervised them in the absence of a lieutenant. All those selections gave Rick the experience that prepared him well for this new role. We're excited and pleased to promote him to the police lieutenant position. Please join me in congratulating Lieutenant Cuellar for the significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Joining Rick this evening is his wife Cynthia, who will be pinning on his badge. Cynthia, please come on up. Cynthia, just so you know, when we give the oath of office, I'm going to be calling you back up and you'll stand next to Rick, okay? All right. Okay, next we have Officer Daniel Graff, uh, is, is being selected and appointed to the position of corporal. Uh, Daniel's been a police officer for nineteen years. He came to the Federal Way Police Department fourteen years ago as an experienced officer from Hawaii. Daniel spent twenty years in various supervisory and training positions in the United States Navy. At the Federal Way Police Department, Daniel is a longtime field training officer. He has served as a defensive tactics, arrest, and control team member. He was a school resource officer, an emergency driving instructor, and a major crime scene team member. Last year, Daniel did a stint in detectives. When Daniel's supervisor nominated Daniel for this position, he wrote, "Officer Graff has a good work ethic, is well respected by his peers, and writes thorough police reports." Daniel is an informal leader on his patrol squad. We're excited to make him that official, uh, appointment to the position of corporal. Please join me in congratulating Corporal Graff for the significant achievement in his law enforcement career. Okay, so, uh, Daniel has quite a bit of family member here tonight, but, uh, the person that's going to come up to pin his badge is his son. Tristan, will you come up and pin the badge? Tristan, now you have practice for the next promotion. Okay. Lieutenant Cuellar, if you can come on up. Cynthia, please come on up and join your husband. The mayor will give the oath of office.
Lieutenant, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Ricardo Cuellar.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
Perform the duties of lieutenant.
And and for the City of Federal Way.
And and for the City of Federal Way.
In King County, Washington.
In King County, Washington.
As such duties prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
Dan, if you could come on up. Tristan, you're welcome to join your father.
Corporal, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Daniel Graff.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of corporal.
Perform the duties of corporal.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
As such duties prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Congratulations, Corporal.
Officers, please come forth.
Officers, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Daniel Dai.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
In and for the City of Federal Way.
King County, Washington.
King County, Washington.
Should we do a picture? Sure. Officer, so he could stand, uh, front and center. Yep, and back up, and the council and the mayor will stand behind you for a group photo.
Literally and figuratively, officers.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, guys.
The chief should be in the picture with them.
Chief.
And commander. Oh, and commander.
Chief.
You gotta get in now.
And Ben, let's grab this picture too.
We want your picture too. Yeah.
Commander. All right. Yeah, congratulations. Good luck.
Federal Way Police Family, this is your opportunity to exit, so this is the time if you're, and, and please make sure you give them a tour of the Police Department. And I will send you each of the, the photos to each of the officers, so you'll get all of those. Okay, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, chief. Hey, we're really making a lot of progress getting all these folks hired and, uh, your council actually at the last budget increased the number of budgeted officers to one hundred and fifty-four, and we are working our way there to make sure we are a fully staffed Police Department. So thank you, chief, and all the officers and all the command staff. And thank you to council. Okay, uh, with that, um, now we're at emerging, uh, mayor's emerging issues and report. Uh, we've got the annual State of the City address, um, and that'll be on Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, this year. So just in, just about a month, uh, we're going to be at the Performing Arts and Event Center. Uh, the address starts at six P M. It's free to the public. Once again, it's at the Performing Arts and Event Center Thursday. I like to do events on Thursday. Thursday, February thirteenth. Now, it's I heart Federal Way, and, uh, we were trying to figure out the good day to do it. And the way the dates were working out was the day right before Valentine's Day. So, uh, we're embracing the Valentine's Day theme. Uh, we love our community and, uh, uh, we've got a lot to, uh, to talk about and a lot to, uh, I really look forward to in the future as well. So I hope you can make it. Uh, and for those that can't make it, uh, we're obviously going to be, we're showing that, uh, on YouTube. It'll be on channel twenty-one, uh, and we'll make sure that we get that out for you, uh, if you can't make it that particular night. But there's all kinds of fun things that night. And also, one of the things we do in the lobby of the Performing Arts and Event Centers have dozens, literally, uh, four, almost five dozen, uh, tables of community organizations, local governments, uh, city departments, and it's a great opportunity both before and after the talk, uh, to really connect, uh, with, uh, the nonprofits, the organizations, and our community. So, uh, all right, next.
We're having technical difficulties here. There we go.
There we go. All right, well, we had a very busy, uh, closeout of the year. Uh, you could see, uh, right there, we had the, uh, tree lighting event at Town Square Park on December seventh. Uh, John, uh, once again, just your, your team did an amazing job. Um, and, uh, you could see, actually, the, the little box there, uh, is, uh, how we turned on the, the tree. And, uh, we had just, you know, how many people you think were there, John?
Uh, we're positive there was at least five hundred. That's based upon the amount of cups for hot chocolate.
Well, I had three cups, so. Just kidding, just kidding.
Estimates are suddenly down to two hundred.
Wendy and, yeah, Wendy and Ben got their cookie too, but never mind. Um, so it was a great event. It's always, and great thanks to all the people that, all the kids that performed and, and, uh, the adults, and, and it was great as well. Um, and we had, uh, obviously Santa made an appearance, and, uh, so it was a really great community event. Um, okay, then we had South King County. Pete and Reichbauer put together a great leadership event for South King County leadership. You know, Pete has been our, our city, uh, excuse me, county council member, uh, for, gosh, I think thirty years now. And, uh, he invited, uh, uh, former Governor Christine Gregoire to the Performing Arts and Event Center on December twelfth. There were a lot of students there from the school district and, uh, and elected leaders from, um, in South King County, and many members of the city council were there. And it was really interesting to hear, um, you know, former Governor Christine Gregoire not only talking about her time as, her two terms as governor, but when she was Attorney General, when she was, uh, the department head for the State Department of Ecology, and, uh, also, uh, what it was like to grow up in Auburn. And, uh, that's, uh, that she, uh, she hails from Auburn and, and, uh, it was, it was great to hear a lot of the life lessons, and I think, but not only did the kids get a lot out of it, the elected officials did as well. She's very personable, and she's been very involved, uh, in her organization with, uh, local businesses, regional businesses, uh, to attract, um, capital and investment into the Northwest. So a big thanks to her and a big thanks to Pete, uh, who is just really a very important, uh, figure in our community. We had the winter bonsai solstice and the, uh, at the Pacific Bonsai Garden on December fourteenth. Um, you see me on the, on the far right. Uh, actually, whereas we were going through there, I was astounded to see that one of the bonsai trees was, I think, twelve hundred years old. And, uh, it is, if, if you haven't been through there recently, I would encourage you to go through there. Not only do we have a world-renowned bonsai garden, but we also have a world-renowned, um, rhododendron garden. So when you get an opportunity, go through there. Uh, there were a lot of people there. It was great, and, uh, they really did it well with, with the lights, and I think I only had one cup of cocoa there. But, uh, all right, next. Okay, then we had the Senior Commission Connections, uh, December eighteenth. Uh, that was, uh, that's the picture on the far left at the community center, uh, in one of the community rooms. We are so fortunate to have so many dedicated, uh, seniors under Senior Commission. I know that Councilmember Honda's been very involved in that, as have several council members. And it was really, they asked great questions and, uh, uh, it was, uh, they gave me, they, they gave me the questions to the test before I got there. Uh, so I, I got to prepare a bit, and, uh, it was, it was great to talk about, uh, what, what we're doing at the city and what, what our plans are. We had the Korean Quarterly Meeting on December nineteenth, and there's, uh, uh, myself and, uh, Mayor Park. Uh, he was mayor, um, when I was first deputy mayor a long time ago, and, and he, uh, is a great servant. And one of the things we've been talking about, I don't know if you guys have seen it, but the, the Honda East structure, uh, over there by the Aquatic Center, between the ball fields and the King County Aquatic Center, it's a beautiful facility. They're in the process of, um, of putting that all together, the, the final touches. And, um, I believe Hunter, we says, I believe in Korean, it means, uh, together we are one. And so that was, uh, uh, what we, they talked about that, and there's, uh, department updates. The, uh, Korean Quarterly Meeting is one of the longest-standing, uh, activities in the City of Federal Way. I think it's been twenty-five, twenty-six. Yeah, over twenty-five years we've been doing the, uh, the Quarterly Meeting and, and, uh, uh, so it was a very productive meeting. Also, uh, last Saturday, we had the, uh, the, the scouting for trees event recycling. That was, uh, on January fourth, on Saturday, we got, uh, a number of troops, uh, and, uh, girl scouts and boy scouts, and, uh, they were, not only were they taking recycled Christmas trees, but they were also taking the lights as well. And I'd like to thank our, uh, our public works teams that were there. And, uh, and that's good. Actually, there were a lot of, a lot of trees, a lot of lights, a lot of folks. It was a very successful event and, and glad I could make it. Okay, and then, all right. Uh, we've got the MLK Day Celebration on Jan- Saturday, January eighteenth, ten thirty A M, uh, to one P M. at the Performing Arts and Event Center. And I know that our Diversity Commission has been working hard on this. I'm, I'll say a few words as will, uh, my friend Evan Cook, who is going to be, I believe, giving the keynote address. Uh, he's a, a great, uh, uh, individual in our community, uh, and I believe he's going to be giving the keynote. So that's again, January eighteenth, ten thirty A M. All right. Okay, uh, that's my, uh, report. And, uh, now we're on to the most important part of the meeting, which is public comment. Now, unless you're speaking for five people, you've got three minutes. Green means go. Yellow means you've got, so when it turns to yellow, it means you've got thirty seconds, time to start winding down. When red hits, would you, please stop. I don't, I don't like to interrupt people, um, unless you've just got like one more word or one, you're, you're on the verge. Now, we understand that, um, let me just, um, there's going to be a lot of, um, I think there's some, probably some strong feelings on, on both sides. And let's just make sure that we have a very productive, um, uh, dialogue, um, and just please be respectful of, uh, of everyone's opinions and, and no matter how, you know, close-felt, uh, those are, uh, for you individually. So, uh, with that, uh, and everybody knows the rules, we just, we keep it to the topics. Uh, okay, with that, I've got, uh, a number of individuals who signed up, um, and then I've got individuals who signed pink sheets. We've got one individual, which is remote, and we've got some public comment. So, um, prior to the meeting, the following individuals signed up. And if you could queue up and, and be ready, um, sorry about my voice, you guys. For some reason, my voice is a little, um, I must have a little frog in there. Um, not literally. Um, okay, so we've got Allison Isinger, Jeannie Leggett, Vivian Alexander, Saffrona Young, Fia Oliphant Wells, Terry Lee Bishop, and Chloe Gale. So, uh, first, we'll hear from Allison, but if I called your name, if you could sort of queue up toward the back, don't, don't jumble up by the, um, uh, by the podium, but, uh, just, you know, close. We've got quite a number of public comment. I'm sorry? I think there's over twenty-two. Is Allison in the house? Okay. Allison Isinger? What's that?
She's on her way.
Oh, okay. When she gets here, would you, would, just have her check in with the clerk? We'll want to hear from her. Well, we want to hear from everybody, but just let, let Stephanie know, our city clerk. Uh, is Jeannie Leggett here? And then Vivian will be after that.
Good evening. Um, I'm actually just here to say hello and officially introduce our, um, security company, Washington Protection Services, to the council and the community that's here. Um, we have recently moved back, been back about a year and a half, and so we're just trying to make new contacts and let everybody know that we're here and working for you.
All right. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Vivian Alexander.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Couchmar, council members, members of the community. My name is Vivian Alexander. I'm a member of the Human Services Commission. However, I am speaking as a member of the Federal Way community, in which I have lived for the past eight years. Over the course of my life, I've found myself in transition a couple of times where I left my housing, left family. If it hadn't been for family members, I don't know what I'd have done. I know that at one point, you know, I had to figure out what I was going to do with myself and my two-year-old daughter. I cannot imagine being homeless. I can't imagine being unhoused, being unhoused for a period of time. With everything I've learned about myself over my life, I don't think I would have survived. I think a person who is homeless, chronic homeless person, possibly a person with mental illnesses, I, just think about the survival mechanisms that have to fall into place to allow that. I have a strong denial system. I could have, maybe for a little while, thought I was doing better than I was, but I don't really believe I would have survived. So, I would ask everyone if they would try to put their minds on the human beings that we're thinking about and not their shopping carts. Of course, you know, nobody likes unsightly things. At one time, we worried that people were walking in stores, and they were, and stealing things, putting them in shopping carts. But if you've looked around, and I've seen in Federal Way, in Seattle, in Kent, in Auburn, there's older people. Can you imagine being 50 years old and living out of your shopping cart and having maybe only one place to go? And that's the Day Center here in Federal Way. I think the Day Center saves lives. I think the Day Center has some issues, obviously. That's why a lot of people are here, to talk about not funding them. But put yourself in the shoes, if it is possible, of a person who is homeless, or yourself who might find yourself homeless. There are unforeseen circumstances for people. I ask that the city council vote to not only oversee the, work with this, the Day Center, to have them come into the compliance that you're looking for, but to fund the Day Center like the Human Services recommended. I believe we can do both things, and that means that would be a win-win situation for the homeless people that use the Day Center. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Saphronia Young. I'm a member of Saltwater Unitarian Universalist Church. I'm a homeowner in Federal Way, have been since 2007. I've had business offices here since 2012, and I'm here also to support funding, full funding, of the Federal Way Day Center. When Federal Way first opened the Day Center and showed that kind of support, I was never more proud than to be a citizen of this community. It was an astonishing time, it's an astonishing thing that we do. I've personally been to the Day Center several times. The last time I was there, about two weeks ago, to donate some items. It was clean, it was neat, everybody outside, I was just dressed like I am today. Everybody was very polite to me, they were polite to each other. You know, from time to time, I hear about these problems, and I've tried to volunteer, you know, how can I help? I went on to the city website, and I was looking for specific information about the problems and the complaints. I didn't find it, so I had to submit a public records request to see specifically what is the issue, because without very specific criteria, we don't know how to fix it. So, I'm asking the city, if you're going to put standards out there and say that the Day Center is not meeting them, please let us, members of the public, know what is necessary so that we can step up and help, because we will. How many people here support the Day Center? It's very, very supported, because we all believe what the prior speaker said. It's important to be compassionate, kind, caring, decent human beings, and I think most of the homeowners in this community and most of the business owners agree with me, and certainly, the faith communities do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thea Oliphant Wells, and then Terry Lee Bishop.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Thea. I'm a Federal Way resident, parent here. I've lived here since 2019. I also have a master's degree in social work, and my focus was mental health, and the population that I chose to serve in my career has been the chronic homeless population. These are my people, people that I know very well personally and have worked to design services specifically around substance use disorders that meet people's needs. And part of what is really vital for helping people to change their drug use behavior and to treat their mental health is having a safe, stable place to be. The fact that we don't have shelter for people as we head into winter is really an abomination, honestly. I don't know what our calling is as humans, but I imagine there's a better way for us to treat our vulnerable community members. And frankly, to leave disabled people on the street, elderly people on the street, is painful to see. I would love to see the Day Center get the support that it needs, and I also want to encourage you all to find a way to fund shelter for people. It's getting cold and wet out there, and people really, their health is deteriorating rapidly, anytime they're living outdoors and going without. And as a mental health provider, I know if someone has stable housing and their basic needs met, we can do some trauma work, we can get in there and really do some mental health work. But if people's basic needs are not met, we have to work on that, and that can be the biggest challenge. And we're not addressing people's mental health, or well-being, or wellness. As we have folks who are outdoors, my cousin was recently living homeless, and like most people, had to go to Seattle for services. When I was living homeless in King County, I also had to relocate to Seattle in order to access shelter. And really, the homelessness issue has gotten so big. Our community has residents of our community that are living outdoors. They shouldn't have to move to another place in order to be cared for. Thank you for your time.
And is that Allison in the back of the room? Are you ready, or would you like a minute?
You're very kind, I'd love a minute.
Yeah, let's, we'll give you a couple of minutes. Okay, Terry Lee Bishop.
Good evening. My name is Terry Lee Bishop. I have been a Federal Way resident since 1980. I've owned property here for all that time, and I've seen the homeless problem get worse and worse. As the cook and a regular server with the SAC Lunch Program at Calvary Lutheran, I know many of the clients that use the Day Center. I know them by name. I hear their stories about the unique services that the Day Center provides. They provide laundry, showers, a place for mail, computer access, and seamless access to both physical and mental health care. Without those computers, they have no way to fill out job applications. Without the showers and laundry, they have no way to be clean and presentable to go to a job interview. And the medical help is just, you know, several people have addressed it. There are elderly and disabled people out there on the street, in the cold, in the wet. I see them every day when we feed them. Without these services, our homeless population will be even less hopeful and more prone to depression and/or addiction. If the funding isn't approved and the services that the Day Center provides no longer exist, what are the alternatives for our neighbors that now receive these services? We all understand that there are issues with the garbage and the debris. We at Calvary experience some of these same things when we're feeding the homeless. We, we have garbage, and we go around and pick it up. But these are far outweighed by the positive things that the Day Center provides. I, I looked at the website today, and I could not find anywhere, like the lady before me said, I couldn't find anywhere where specific things were documented. So, I don't know what measures have been attempted to help alleviate the problem, whether there's been some brainstorming with Catholic Community Services, or maybe contracting with waste management for extra trash collection, or maybe a system with the clients themselves, because it's been my experience as a parent and as a leader in my career, that people with skin in the game are more likely to be engaged in keeping things running smoothly. So, I, I'd really like to see that the parties can work together to build a bridge to a solution, instead of a wall that creates winners and losers and more division. I really, really hope that the Day Center can continue to be funded at its full level. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Chloe Gale. I'm a, my official title is VP of Policy and Advocacy on behalf of Evergreen Treatment Services, which is one of the largest addiction treatment agencies that we have in King County, and we have clinics from Thurston County down in Olympia, all the way up to Shoreline. I'm also here on behalf of the REACH Program, which is our second clinical program at Evergreen Treatment Services, and I personally helped found that program almost 30 years ago. But I'm not just here in my professional capacity, I've also been born and raised in this community in King County, and I have spent many years working as a social worker down in South King County. This is my first time here. I want to say I'm tremendously moved by all of the support in this room that I'm feeling on behalf of the homeless community, the unchallenged community outside. Also, our organization has a really a strength, expertise around addiction, and particularly opioid addiction and the fentanyl crisis that's going on right now. We find our need, the need for our services is incredibly escalated. So, I'm here in support of keeping the Day Center funded. I also am, I want to add to the last speaker that I agree that I also would love to see additional shelter here in Federal Way. And I want to just name a few things. Because of our organization's space, we have the largest street outreach team in the whole of King County, and we work with lots of small communities. So, I want to name that every small community and every neighborhood is struggling with how to work with people that are homeless, that are with poverty, and really significant behavioral health issues right in our front door. And what we see every single day as we go out to encampments, as we meet with people in tents, as we go into parks, is that people need to have a first step to climb the long ladder back into stability and recovery. And we see that every day, because we walk alongside people. And the places where those first steps happen are really our Day Centers and our shelters. That's where they happen. One of the things that I get to say often is that people don't recover in tents. They recover inside, and they recover in a safe space where they know that people care about them and believe in their healing. That's a lot of the care that people need. So, I'm grateful for the support in this room, and I really encourage you to continue your front doors, because you have invested in them, and continue to build that front door here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Allison Isinger, and I have the honor of serving as the Director of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. Our coalition exists to mobilize our community, to work against the systemic causes of homelessness, and to advocate for housing justice. And we are a membership organization with over 60 organizations, large and small, across King County. We are independent, non-governmental, and we also have the pleasure and honor of co-convening the South King County Forum on Homelessness, together with, among other people, the staff who work for your Human Services Department. We listen to folks all around King County. That is part of what is required to be able to do our education, policy, and advocacy work. And I often say that the places that we need to go, whether it's to get information about a public health crisis out to people, or to make sure that people participate in the U.S. Census, those are the places where folks experiencing homelessness, living with disabilities, and struggling to get through a day, a week, or a month at a time are welcomed and are treated with respect, and those include places like the Day Center here in Federal Way. We have numerous times come and worked with staff at the Day Center to be able to communicate with and listen to the folks whom they serve. I do run a coalition. I cannot play favorites, but I can tell you from the bottom of my heart, and 18 years in this job, there is no agency that is a better problem-solving partner than Catholic Community Services. I'm here to just remind you and all of us of a few core facts. It's not rocket science. These are just some truths that I think are really helpful for all of us as we go through our work. One is that more than 50% of the people in King County who experience homelessness are without shelter after our shelters are full. We do provide good shelter for thousands of families and individuals, but we still leave thousands more outside. A second point made by some others is, no one gets better outside. We need to bring people inside so that they can heal and recover. A third truth is that without shelter and day services, people will die. And a fourth truth is that housing ends homelessness. As I said, this is not rocket science. I don't think I'm sharing things with you that you've never heard or thought about, but what I hope you will take to heart as you do your work is that these are truths that we have to put at the center of policymaking decisions. This Day Center and the work that is done, and the people who are served there, are essential to the health and well-being of all of Federal Way and of all of our county. Thank you.
Stephanie, as far as individuals remotely, we have the one that previously, do we have Fozzy Bilal? Okay, and that person signed up previously? Okay, so let's, we should do that now. And then we've got quite a number of pink sheets left.
Is this remotely?
I think so, yeah. Are we ready?
He's muted. I don't know if Thomas can unmute him from the back.
Okay, can you see if maybe, maybe we've got a phone number, or we could send a message? As soon as, as soon as you get a green light, that they're ready to go, we'll get, we'll get that individual started. Fozzy, can you hear us? Okay, when we get that resolved, then we'll, we'll move on. All right, now, the rest of the pink sheets, we've got, I'll call out several names, and then if you could sort of queue up, and we'll, we'll go through these in order. Lynn Ormsby, Diana Vaughn, Susan Strong, Melissa Hamilton, Jeffrey Tancredi, and Kathy Jorgensen. Let's do that first. Okay, Lynn?
My name is Lynn Ormsby, and I've lived in Federal Way since 1974. I was part of the team that helped to start the Day Center. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, our city dedicated shelters to, sponsored by Reach Out and Catholic Community Services and volunteers in churches, but the city no longer has those facilities. At last March 19th City Council meeting, Erin Walsh, a local social worker... At last March 19th City Council meeting, Erin Walsh, a local social worker, shared what it's like to be homeless. How does one remember to go to appointments when all of one's belongings are routinely stolen, and there is no way of telling the date or time? How does one do the emotional and spiritual work of healing from trauma and pursuing sobriety when you don't know where your next meal is, or where you will spend the night? Exhaustion and stress can cause serious health defects. These folks are seeking a community they can learn to trust. They seek emotional support and acceptance as human beings. Right now, the Day Center is that welcoming place to meet a compassionate staff who understands their needs. Yet the center is only open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Still, this is the only site in our city like this. We need to understand these adults experiencing homelessness are not just around the property of the Day Center. I have seen men sleeping on the sidewalk in front of Bardina Noble, outside Safeway on 320th, and on the sidewalk of the shopping center on the corner of Dash Point and 312th. Our city is now facing an emergency shelter crisis. Housing was provided through community block grant funding for women and children. Now we must follow through with a sense of urgency for single men and women. I requested the status for the opening of the Red Lion on 348th Street from Keith Niven, our Community Development Director for Federal Way. As of last July 16th, he stated, "The building requires some updates, and CCS will need to get an operating license from the city. We believe the permitting and licensing will be done this year, with construction work to follow." Although it is too early to have a good sense of when this facility might open, it's conceivable it could be occupied by the first quarter of 2025. Since winter is here, status updates on at least a monthly basis of the county's progress toward completion of the Red Lion would really help. Immediate action from city and county officials to collaborate toward an emergency shelter will not only save lives, but benefit our valued business community. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak to you today. Diana Vaughn, longtime Federal Way resident, retired healthcare provider. I've worked with populations of homeless and people at risk in the past as well. The need for services for homeless and substance-addicted is clear. What's less clear to me is how the current services in Federal Way have benefited this population, and if there's been a thorough benefit analysis to costs done. This evaluation, excuse me, ideally would include monetary costs, cost to the community in terms of safety, impact on local crime, and use of our limited police and community first responder services. So I have questions that I'd like to see answered. Does Federal Way actually have the infrastructure in place needed to serve this population beyond the services provided by the Day Center, which I understand to be pretty limited in scope? How much case management is actually being done? That's written in their idea that they want to do case management. Where and how often are clients actually being referred for detox, rehab, and counseling? How effective is that being? Where are clients being sent for medical management? What are the goals stated of the daycare center? And how are they communicated to the larger community? And if so, are those goals being met? Who is accountable to evaluate and report on the success of the daycare, of the day program? And where can citizens get access to information? When I look on the website, there's really no information out there about how successful it's being, and what benefits, what measurable benefits are being provided. We need benefits to these populations, that I have no doubt about it. On a related note, it's already been mentioned that hotel, the homeless hotels in Federal Way are not up and running, and that there's no place for these people to go once the Day Center is closed. And apparently, they're being put on transit services to stay out of the cold. So until there's more progress on comprehensive management of local homeless services, I can't support the funding of the Day Center until we know more. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment, Susan. Brian and Keith, did you get all those? Okay. And then we've got, let's, we'll follow up with Ms. Vaughn via email, and anybody else who would like that information. Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, council members. I'm Susan Strong. I've lived in Federal Way since 1975. I had my notes all made up for today, and I'm completely, I was going to be dramatic and tear up my page, but I won't be that dramatic. I'm going to stay calm. I want to point out one thing. We have a drug problem. Federal Way wasn't this way when I moved here from Seattle. We have a drug problem. King County has a drug problem. Washington State has a drug problem. I think we might work on this a little better if we discuss working on the drug problem. Mental health is also another issue. I will say that the Day Center did help a mentally ill senior citizen female, and she's now off the street, and thank you. That took a long time. But until we treat the drug problem, I don't know where we're going. But I work with stand-up Federal Way community. We've helped a lot in the city to clean up the mess, the unbelievable mess that these people have left, in the wetlands of all places, and around town. So before I go way off track, I'll just say, let's deal with the drug problem. These people need to make a choice. There needs to be a law that says you're making a choice. You're going to, I guess, go to jail, or go to drug treatment. I'm not sure. But anyway, thanks for the time.
Melissa Hamilton, and then Jeffrey Tancredi.
I forgot my glasses, so this should be fun. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, City Council President Kochmar, council and community. My name is Melissa Hamilton, and I'm a Federal Way resident. I have been watching in anticipation these last six months to see what would happen to crime following the reinstatement of police pursuits in July, and it's encouraging to see that Federal Way is making progress, especially after several challenging years. This is a testament to the hard work of not only our law enforcement, but the community, the people of Washington State, who advocated and pushed for better policies. While it's going to take some time to return to the pre-crisis 2021 crime levels, reinstating police pursuits, a key reform pushed by citizens, is already showing results. And I want to pause for just a minute and explain something to put that statement in context. In 2020, we had 10 people on record, according to reports, that fled from our police officers. 10 people. In 2023, that number jumped to 431 people who fled from our police officers. Now next year, if we cut that number in half, we're still going to have 215 people who are fleeing from our police officers. That's not good. That's a crazy high number, but it would be progress, and I'm going to celebrate that progress. I do feel just a little bit safer knowing that our police can now apprehend people who are harming our community again. I do feel a little bit safer seeing less open-air drug use on our main highway. Not zero open-air drug use, but less. Again, progress. I wasn't here to talk about the Day Center, but since everybody's talking about it, I'll share just a couple thoughts. Millions and millions of taxpayer dollars were spent to purchase two hotels in our city to house the unhoused population, and the county has not delivered on their promise. And so I hope that everyone here who is speaking is also reaching out to their county executive and to their county council members, and asking them when they plan to deliver on that promise. Thank you.
When we get all done with the comments, everybody, I'm going to have Brian Davis, the city administrator, give us a couple of, just a bullet points in regard to some updates about those two locations, and some other information as well. So, but we're going to wait till we get done with all of it, so we don't do it piecemeal. Jeffrey Tancredi, and then Kathy Jorgensen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, and council members. Happy New Year. My name is Jeff Tancredi, a Federal Way resident since about 1997. Mayor, yeah, appreciate you giving me a chance to talk. I went to two locations that are right near the Day Center. I went to Kit's Corner Apartments today. I talked to one of the property managers, and I talked to two residents. They're not happy. The problem is, is these folks are, many of them are addicted to drugs. They're sleeping on the property, they're trespassing, they're leaving trash. This is where people live. This is where people live, okay? And they're trespassing. They leave their trash there. I said, "Well, what are you all doing? Can you call 911?" And one guy just shook his head at me, as if to say, "It's not going to do any good." I said, "If you call 911, it establishes a pattern. The police will know that there's a problem there, and they'll come more often." There's a lot of black and brown folks that live in Kit's Corner. How would you like to have a Day Center right near you? That's doing what's going on right now. I talked to the daycare center across the street from the Day Center, the daycare for kids. I talked to the staff there in the office today. One lady there in the office said that people will come and they'll park their car in the daycare parking lot, and then go across the street, presumably to do a drug deal with somebody. How would you like your business? How would you like to have your business, people come to your business, park their car, and then they go and do a drug deal? One of the staff members said that people enrolled their kids, Mayor, into the Day Center, or the daycare, but then soon after, they have to pull their kids out because of the dangers. For the last year, year and a half, I've been up and down Pack Highway. I talk to businesses. You need to talk to businesses and find out what's going on with their businesses. The folks that are the homeless drug addicts, and they are drug addicts, because I have firsthand experience going into the encampments and cleaning them up. And it's just, it's just a very unfortunate situation. Those businesses, they told me, when I went up and down Pack Highway, they told me that these drug addicts will defecate, urinate, steal from their property. I mean, it's, so these, these people that have these businesses on Pack Highway and nearby Pack Highway, they're on the front lines, okay? We're out in our neighborhoods, we're a little bit away from it, but they're on the front lines. So I would encourage you to talk to the businesses that are near there and find out what their concerns are. We know that they're down on their luck, but they're terrorizing local businesses. That's where it's a problem. They need to be in a 24-hour monitored drug treatment facility where they can be monitored by medical professionals. That's what they need. That's the humanitarian thing.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Kathy Jorgensen, and then we have the Reverend Allison Duvene Sutherland.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Jorgensen. I live in, unincorporated King County, near Thomas Jefferson High School, about half-mile from the city limits. I'm here to advocate for funding of the Federal Way Day Center. Currently, the Day Center is the only facility in the city of Federal Way that serves homeless people. There are currently no overnight shelters in Federal Way, as has been mentioned by prior speakers. Homelessness is a complex problem caused by many factors, including unaffordable housing, domestic violence, physical and mental illness, job loss, and substance abuse. There is no easy solution to assisting people transitioning from unhoused to housed. However, eliminating the only facility in Federal Way which serves unhoused people is not a step towards solving problems for the unhoused. Please restore full funding to the Federal Way Day Center. Without the services provided by the Day Center, the problem will only get worse. And I am also here as a member of Saltwater Unitarian Universalist Church. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council members, I'm the Reverend Allison Duran Sutherland, the minister at Saltwater Unitarian Universalist Church. We are located in Des Moines, but about a third of our members live right here in Federal Way, many of whom are here tonight along with other community partners to support full funding of the Federal Way Day Center. It was one of my predecessors, Reverend James Kubal Komodo, who shook hands with a past mayor to affirm the city's commitment to fund the Day Center at its inception. And I want to tell you that more and more of my congregation are struggling with economic and housing insecurity. My rental assistance fund has dwindled in the past year because so many people are challenged to be able to afford one of the basic necessities of life: shelter. Unitarian Universalists draw from many sacred and sacred sources, as well as the teachings of science, which all affirm the truth that humanity is kindred. We are each other's siblings, descended from common ancestors, more alike than we are different. We are our brother's keeper, charged to love our neighbor, not only the neighbor who is like us and who behaves in ways we like and understand, but any neighbor, all our neighbors, all our human kin. And here in Federal Way, we allow a shocking number of our siblings to live without shelter, 850 people sleeping on the streets every night. For comparison, the city of Philadelphia, more than 10 times the size of Federal Way, has about 950 people sleeping outside. 10 times as large, only 100 more people sleeping outside. What's the difference between the city of brotherly love and Federal Way? Shelters. Services. We have no shelters here, and the Day Center is a lone service provider to help our unhoused neighbors find any kind of housing, any kind of stability, to allow them to heal from the mental health, drug, and alcohol, other problems that may have put them on the streets. It is our moral obligation to care for our human kin, and it is a moral failing when we do not. And a budget is a moral document. Funding the Day Center where our unhoused siblings can find referrals, resources, and help meeting their basic needs is an essential step toward a truly moral budget for the city of Federal Way. An essential first step that needs to be followed up by funding places for these neighbors to sleep at night, as has always been the goal from that first handshake with the former mayor and Reverend James, that the Day Center would be the beginning of providing for the needs of people without housing who live in Federal Way. May it be so. May you be the ones who make it so. Amen, and blessed be.
Okay, the next speakers, Lucy Faithfull, Lana Bostic, Ken Blevins, Jan Barber, Carolyn
So does it go green when I start talking?
It should, it should be on. Actually, it hasn't, there it is. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, members of the city council, and members of the community. My name is Lucia Faithfull. I'm a member of Saltwater Church, which is affiliated with Sound Alliance. Just over 10 years ago, the Day Center Coalition, composed of Sound Alliance affiliates, faith-based and service organizations, gained a public commitment from Mayor Farrell to work with us to create the Federal Way Day Center. The following spring, the city council committed a large financial donation to help get the Federal Way Day Center started. After much hard work and a lot of community support, the Day Center was, opened its doors in December 2016. I was very proud of what we accomplished. The center was conceived as a source, as a source, resource, and information hub where low-income people... where low-income people and unhoused people could find resources of where to turn for help in the community. It helped with such things as securing an ID card, a place to get mail, use of computers for job search, and referrals from counselors for health-related services, to name just a few, things that we often take for granted, but a big deal for someone who does not have a home. Most importantly, it provides a warm place to be during the day and offers opportunities for showers, washing laundry, preparing food, and to connect with community. I know people who have gotten jobs, who have received temporary and permanent housing. The experiences of the center have allowed some to complete their GED and to degrade and to gain a degree of self-esteem, which allows some to reconnect with estranged community members. Since the pandemic, there is no temporary shelter in Federal Way for individuals. So I ask you, where would you go when there is no shelter? Sleeping in the woods, on sidewalks, and in public areas is restricted, so I'm running out of that time. So I'm urging the Federal Way, the city council, to make it a priority to address these challenges that are not easy but necessary, and to make it a high priority to establish shelters. And as the city considers itself a welcoming city to work with, for Day Center funding and for being, helping to make the community whole, for we are not whole with this tragedy that is in our midst. Thank you for your time.[729.12][729.12](APPLAUSE).
Lana Bostic.
Good evening, Mayor and council and people of Federal Way. I want to thank everybody that has come to support the Day Center tonight. My name is Lana Bostic. I've lived in Federal Way for 43 years. I'm also the chairperson of the Senior Advisory Commission, but I am speaking here for myself. I am concerned about the lack of shelter and resources for homeless people in Federal Way. In Federal Way, we have no shelters for single adults, men or women, no dedicated shelter for two and a half years. People with behavioral issues have nowhere to go after they go to the hospital, or they discharged from a hospital, from the hospital and then often end back up in the ER again because there's no place else to go. The Day Center is not equipped to treat people like that. They have a lot of good case management, but people that are discharged from a hospital need to be in a safer place, an overnight place. The Federal Way Day Center is the only daytime refuge in the city, and I'm sure, I'm unsure of what actual plans the city has to help the homeless. And the surrounding cities like Tacoma-Auburn, Kent-Renton have been more successful with finding solutions to this issue. There was an article in the August 31st Mirror that was called "Tale of Two Cities," which explained how we are behind Auburn, that we have not been able to, to work with this problem at all. Today, I contacted the Urban League about what's happening with the extended stay, and that's the person that's on the, on the call, so hopefully he will call back to kind of find out what's going on with that, because that is just sitting there empty and I don't know what's going on. And then at the senior luncheon last month, Susan Honda, Councilwoman Susan Honda suggested contacting King County to find out what's going on. I did call and email to Peter Von Reichbauer and didn't get any response from him, but I know it's just the beginning of the session, so I don't know what's happening about that. And I also know the many times I've heard the plans for the TC3 and the downtown of Federal Way, and I think maybe that will be nice in 25 years, but we are in a crisis right now. And I want the council to focus on showing compassion and really make some progress on providing housing for our most vulnerable population. Ignoring this is not going to make it go away, so I would ask you to please totally fund the Day Center. Thank you.
Thank you.[921.12][921.12](APPLAUSE). I'd like to acknowledge a very special public servant who's with us today. Before she starts the legislative session, Representative Christine Reeves. Let's give her a big round. Thank you.[935.12][935.12](APPLAUSE). Thank you for working, Representative. Ken Blevins. And then, Ken, let me just say something real quick. After Ken, it's going to be Jan Barber, Carolyn Davis, Anna Patrick, Christine Ariola, Steve Milius.
Mayor, city council, and citizens of Federal Way and other people from elsewhere. Thanks for listening to my comments. I did come here for the Day Center. I've come here as often as I can for the Day Center. And, you know, I started Stand Up Federal Way with a group years ago, and we're really serious about helping out our city and ending the homeless drug addiction problem. I didn't see a lot of these people that are up talking right now with us in our group in Stand Up Federal Way. So I don't know where this group has been, but this is great. There's a lot of people here. Come join us, and we can do something about this. But you know what? We cleaned up a lot of homeless drug encampments. The city's cleaned up a lot of homeless drug encampments. We've been on the streets, picked up thousands of needles in one summer. I don't remember these people helping us do that dangerous work, but thanks again. I hope we can do more work. There's not so many needles on the street, it's just people dying of fentanyl. Okay? And the reason why they're dying of fentanyl is because we don't have them in treatment. Okay? They're not unhoused because of the, you know, people are voting for people to be able to raise the taxes so you can't afford your home. Okay? They're out there because they're on, they're addicted to drugs and they can't pay for both drugs and their home. Okay? So what we need to do is we need to do the compassionate thing, and if you really wanted to unhouse people, we can open up these churches and you can house these people in your churches if you're really serious about it. I'm not sure that you are. The government doesn't have enough money for this. They spent billions of dollars, and all they're doing is housing people and they're dying in there. People don't want to be in that housing. It's craziness. People are on drugs. They're not getting the help. If you ask somebody if they want help, they don't want to get help. They want to be on the street. They want to be assaulted and raped out there rather than get helped. How crazy is that? I've had women run into my arms and there's nowhere for them to go. But you guys don't want them to go to jail or go to treatment. You want them in a place where they can go get stuck in a room with somebody and get the same thing happen to them. It's craziness. Okay? Let's spend the money that they're spending right now housing. Let's arrest these people, put them either in the court for breaking laws, not for being homeless, and let's give them an option. You have one, two options. Go to jail, where you're going to get off drugs anyways, and you're going to get your mind back. It's probably not the greatest place for them. Or you can go into treatment, and let's have the facility for them where they can be there safe and they can trust that people are going to get them off the drug, and people are in there, are all getting off the drug and being safe. Mental health, all the stuff that they need, nourishment every day, not just housed, not just go to the Day Center that's dirty all the time where everybody's doing drugs outside of it. Everybody. Drive by. I dare you. In two days, that place is going to be filthy after they just cleaned it up because of this meeting. I go by there all the time. Pacific Highway South is filthy because people getting off the bus and going to the Day Center and back and forth and laying around. It's, it is a public crisis. And please, I'm sorry, I'm over. Hire somebody for the city to watch this stuff. We need to know where these people are coming. 85% of them, according to King County, aren't even from our state. We added 3,500 people this last year. These aren't Washington people. We're inviting them here to this crisis. It's getting worse, so we can't even take care of them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Barber. Oh, as Jan makes her way up, I do want to say that Senator Claire Wilson is online as well, watching. So hello, Senator. And thank you for the work you do. All right, Jan.
Mayor, council president, council members, and friends, neighbors, and taxpayers, this is a challenge. There will be many different voices you're going to continue to hear. I can speak for the church I've been attending. We serve food. There are drainage problems. We can't provide showers in terms of the soil and so forth, but following me is someone else from, from the Lutheran Church who serves food. These people who come, and there are, for her, there are like 30 and 40 people that are served in a day. That is a calling. They are doing good, but the people they're serving are often homeless. I'd also like to speak, thank you, Stand Up Federal Way, for the work that you've done at Church of the Good Shepherd. They came in and they cleaned up, and now the church is looking at possibilities for a different kind of housing in an area that has a stream, woods, and a very steep slope. We're, the community needs to continue to look for options and also recognize the ones who are working hard to provide in whatever way they can with food, water, and regular meals. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.[1284.21][1284.21](APPLAUSE). Carolyn Davis. And then Anna Patrick. Oh, also, I believe that individual that was holding online did drop off. So Stephanie, could you explain that? I know you sent me a note, but...
Steph contacted him and he had no intention of speaking. He just wanted to listen to the meeting but signed up by mistake.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, please.
I'm Carolyn Davis, a longtime member of the, a citizen of Federal Way. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting us address this. I know Day Center is a Band-Aid. If you rip it off, there's no healing of a wound there. It's a beginning. I would kind of like to know what the future holds. Are there plans for, like, we just heard, the drug issue? Maybe there needs to be mandated incarceration, mandated drug help. It may sound harsh, but sometimes you have to hit bottom to start getting out the holes. I really have enjoyed being where I am at Lutheran Church, handing out sack lunches. You get to see familiar faces. You get to hear a little bit of their story. They become more human, and I've become less afraid of the homeless I see on the streets. They have been very polite and kind. Yes, some of them leave a mess, and I don't know how to get them to police themselves, but maybe there is some way to get them to police their own camps, garbage bins, honey buckets, something to help with that kind of thing, and some way to get them to monitor their own cleanup. They need to be part of the solution as well. Anyway, thank you for listening, and I hope good day.
Thank you very much.[1416.11][1416.11](APPLAUSE). Anna Patrick. And then Christine Ariola.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and everybody else. I'm here for the same topic as everybody else do. Regarding the Day Center, for, I don't know what it is, 10 years now we've been dealing with the Day Center. And when it opened, there was a lot of good intentions. There's a lot of needs in our city. A lot of those needs are served, but there's some needs that are not being served, and I'm here to talk about those needs, the drug addiction needs and mental illness and those sorts of things. I feel like if we could address those needs, there'd be a lot more support for the Day Center, but for right now, we're just not missing, we're missing the mark. And we need compassionate people. There's a lot of compassionate people in here. We need compassionate people, but we need to do things in a different order of things, like maybe require people get off drugs before they get the housing. Or, you know, we have, you know, we've had this sort of restorative approach to things, which has been this sort of compassionate permissiveness that doesn't really compel people to change, but more so just sits with people as they are and doesn't have the expectations to compel them to move forward. Now, we're forgetting about a lot of people in this conversation. It's the businesses nearby, it's the families that are waiting for people to get off of drugs, and many of those families are from out of state, and it's the children that have to spend time in the daycare nearby, and this isn't really a bright future for them to look around and see. And it's the apartment dwellers nearby that a lot of you are probably privileged beyond having to live there. And I think when we decide whether or not we're going to open the Day Center, we have some expectations, and then we need some compassionate enforcement. And we've been talking about this for 10 years, and maybe we need to consider not moving forward with the Day Center unless we have some really serious stipulations and they show that they're actually doing them. And we need to weigh our decision on whose voices should really matter. Should it be the people that live in Federal Way, or should it be people that are living in other cities that would like to put it here? And should we be weighing the voices of the businesses that have had to leave? The ones that have had to pack up and move? And the ones who are afraid to take their kids to daycare and decide to go somewhere else? Should we listen to their voices? Or should we be listening to the people that are compassionate and caring and give them the final decision? Or should we be working together to come up with a solution that works for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.[1593.11][1593.11](APPLAUSE). Christine Ariola. And then Steve Milius. And then Carolyn Hoover. Then Betty Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, city council members. My name is Christine Ariola. I live and work in Federal Way. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about the growing impact that the Day Center is having on our community. Over time, we've seen steady decline in the area, and it's becoming more and more difficult to ignore the toll it's taking on nearby businesses, public safety, and our overall sense of community. The rise in break-ins, property damage, encampments spilling over into public spaces, and dangerous activities like bonfires are creating a challenging environment for everyone, especially local businesses, residents, and families. To make matters worse, we're also seeing an alarming increase in an open drug use and drug dealing in front of the Day Center. This behavior not only endangers public safety, but also fosters a climate of fear and lawlessness that affects everyone, particularly vulnerable members of our community. At the heart of these issues, in my opinion, is the Day Center and the way it operates. A responsible business should aim to be a good neighbor, helping to build positive relationships with the community around it. Unfortunately, it feels like the Day Center isn't doing enough to ensure that its actions aren't negatively affecting those of us who live and work nearby. When businesses are focused to deal with these ongoing challenges, it hurts the local economy, damages reputations, and lowers morale, not just for employees but for customers as well. What's especially troubling is how this situation impacts vulnerable places like the Children's Learning Center right across the street, which is now faced with concerns about safety due to the ongoing drug activity. I appreciate your time today, and I hope that meaningful steps can be taken to address these concerns and create a safer, more positive environment for everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.[1734.65][1734.65](APPLAUSE). Steve Milius. And then Carolyn Hoover.
Good evening, council. It's clear to me that this is the homeless industrial complex at work. We are in a fentanyl crisis, not a homeless crisis. I've never seen so many people show up when money's involved. It's, the Catholic Community Services makes over $300 million a year. They truly do not need Federal Way money. They can operate without, without this, without getting funded by Federal Way. The situation at the Day Center is destroying our community. It's attracting a significant amount of criminal, criminal activity, including drug dealing, prostitution. We've seen incidences like fires, ODs, robberies, rapes, and even, and even the discovery of dead bodies in the area. The, the Day Center's approach to helping people is ineffective and actually makes things worse for our city and our surrounding businesses. We need to explore different... We need to explore different and more effective and responsible ways to address addiction in our community. The Day Center should be defunded because the current situation isn't working for anybody. Thank you.
Carolyn Hoover. And then Betty Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmeyer, and all the council members, and everybody out there. First of all, I want to say that I had a business right a minute's walk from the Day Center for 35 years, and we've moved now. We had a last straw, and that was it. Every day that we came to work, something was going on. There was either somebody with a needle in their arm in front of the door. There was crazy people coming in with maybe a machete, or a stick, or, you know, all kinds of things. We had clients that didn't want to come or were afraid to come. Can you meet me at my car? Because of people that were attracted to that area because of the Day Center. Now, I want to say that the multi-service center, they keep a clean ship going there. There's nothing, no garbage, no drug usage selling going on there. But you go by the Day Center every single day. There is people selling. There is people smoking fentanyl. I mean, you cannot believe me if you don't want to, but I'm telling you the God's honest truth. That's what's going on there. You know, there's a lot of people hurting that go there? Yes. But, I mean, there's people that maybe are trying to get off drugs, or they don't want to walk through that gauntlet to get there. And I noticed that you did clean it up the last couple days. Well, if you can clean it up like that, you can have it that way 365 days a year. You know? It should not look the way it looks normally. It's terrible. I would help you if that's what you need, more help. We'll help you. But it's not right. So, anyway. Tell me if a homeless service center fails to address concerns of surrounding business neighbors and the broader community, allows overnight camping, drug use, and sales. What happens? It leads to a major breakdown in trust. When you have the erosion of community support, residents become increasingly frustrated and leading to decreased support for the service center, and their mission becomes blurred. You suffer a loss of credibility, and your reputation suffers as well. I was one of your business neighbors who had been in the same space doing business for about 35 years. I supported Catholic Community Services and some of your patrons, who I have a close relationship with even today.
Carolyn, hold one second. Add one minute.
A close relationship even for today. For business, it wasn't easy. It nearly was something every single day, challenged with safety issues, trash, drug sales and usage, people with mental health issues, et cetera. There wasn't a day that went by where I didn't fume over drug use and sales that surrounded the kinder care, which turned into the bilingual college for kids directly across the street from the Catholic Community Services, which is a problem even today. It's children. I have supported you in hopes there would be change, a visible difference on your part. As time rolls on, it seems like that might just be a dream. It seems the property might get cleaned up for an important council meeting, but in no time it's back to business as usual. You have proven that you are capable and know the community, what the community expects. CCS has been open for about eight, nine years, and I feel you have not achieved the important balance of offering services to the homeless and being a good neighbor.
Betty Taylor. And then Donna Mullins, Tammy Zeack, Ada Sanchez Vela, and Jackie Muth. All right, Betty.
Good evening. My name is Betty Taylor. And I want to let you know why everybody is here. You're here because of one word: noncompliant. That's the word, noncompliant. You're here in numbers, but did anyone, have you been here when the Human Service Commission had meetings and we invited the community to come? No. But y'all want to have your, you want to come now? You want to come now when it's really hot? You want to come now when it's been in the newspaper? I mean, everybody knows what's going on about the Day Center. And you want to show up now? Now. Now is too late. So we're here because of noncompliance. Everybody has a job to do. The Human Service Commission is, they have a job. They need to make sure that there's checks and the checks balance, balances. I's dotted, T's crossed. The City Council has a commission also. They have a job to do, too. So there's no getting around this. I don't care how many people show up here. The main reason why we're here is because of noncompliance. We've given them chances after chances after chances, opened doors for them to come in. Is there anybody here that works at the Day Center here, right now? No. Where are they at? We have the community. Where is the Day Center? Who is going to speak for them? They're not even here. I'm really baffled. I am so baffled. It's noncompliance. That's what it is. You want the real meat? Meat is noncompliance. Everybody has to be in compliance. I used to volunteer with the agency, Senior Services in Seattle. And because of noncompliance, they lost their funding and it went to another agency. The big issue here is noncompliance. Get into compliance. Get right. Do things right. Because right now it's messy. I don't see nobody from the Day Center here to speak for the Day Center. And you're all this clapping and stuff?
Thank you. Donna Mullins. And then Tammy Zeack, Ada Sanchez Vela, and then Jackie Muth.
Hi. I'm here not as a resident of Federal Way, but of Des Moines and part of the Saltwater community and also the Sound Alliance. I'm here because, number one, I like Federal Way. It's where I do all my shopping, and it's where I get all my parking violations turning right on 320. So I'm wondering whether or not you could use that money maybe for this?
Keep doing it.
People get mad at me now because I refuse to turn right. What can I say? I wanted to propose, basically, that I get lost a lot around the Warehouser area. I get lost at a lot of places. And basically, I didn't understand what it was. And then a friend of mine told me. And I thought, why can't we have something like a shelter out in this big, big campus where it isn't infecting all the businesses that we're all talking about? So I was reading, and it says here, effective immediately, this was in 2022, supplemental capital budget passed unanimously by the legislature, will start to evaluate potential options for purchasing or leasing the former Warehouser headquarters. The vision is to transform the iconic 340,000 square feet into a dedicated space for learning, workforce training, and economic development. So I know that it was bought by, I don't know, some large real estate group, but so far, I don't know if anything's been done. So I'm hoping maybe we could all work to help maybe the corporations that are in Federal Way, or Amazon maybe, who's part of some of it, or some of the other places, maybe some of the anti-commercial spots that are away from the businesses, so that Kent can become, I don't mean Kent, I mean Federal Way can become a great place, unlike Everett, which is now having its problems, similar, and Buren, which I used to pass by all the time, but now I like your shopping better. So basically, why can't we work on all the corporate areas around here, the commercial areas, and make it so that we could have a whole campus where we have, you have great hospitals here? I have great experience with those already. So basically, why not the corporations really getting together and forming a big business? That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Zeack. I've been blessed to live in Federal Way for 36 years, not as many as others, but I'm still very happy to be here. Mayor, Detective Mayor, thank you all, Council, for letting me speak. I had a long and passionate speech about funding for the Day Center, all made up, but after having listened to some really good comments on both sides, I too can't stand the trash as I go down the street, but I also can't stand the thought of us giving up without a real effort of finding out what the problem is. Why is it like this? There are other shelters in other towns that don't have these problems. Perhaps it's in the wrong location. But I do know that there is a fix for this. We don't have to just throw it out or close it up because we don't like how it's going. I used to work for a company that sent me all over the United States to go fix problems with retirement communities, find out why they're not functioning, what's going on. And I was very pleased to say that we could go in and, we have to get to the bottom of what it is. What do we need to fix? Perhaps we should form a commission with the city that's for unhoused people or is solving the problems with that. Perhaps a citizens committee getting together, people on both sides, so that we can say, here are the issues. What do we need to fix this? There's a lot of smart people here, a lot of smart fixers, and we can fix this problem. You close the Day Center, and where are these people going to go? Well, back to the Walgreens and all the other places where they're sleeping, and it's going to get worse. We have to fix it, not just close it down. We have to find a way to make this work. I want Federal Way to be the fix-it city. I want us to be in the top 10 cities that say, hey, they have these issues, but they fixed it. I want people to come to us and say, how did you do it? We want to be like you. Instead of all at the bottom of the list of failed communities that have people just out on the streets. And not everybody are drug addicted. I work with seniors. And, you know, you have a lady that gets $656 on Social Security. She can't go to an adult family home. She can't go to assisted living. Where's she going to go? So there are some seniors out there, and it's very, very sad, and I try to help them. But please, 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 let's come up with a solution. I would love to volunteer to help fix this problem. Let's not just quit. Thank you for your time.
Ada Sanchez Vela.
And I second that. What we need is some turbocharged creativity. Good evening to all of you here, community members, mayor, council members. My name is Ada Sanchez Vela. I've lived in Federal Way for 21 years. I am a member of Saltwater Church and a member of the Sound Alliance. For work, I am a court interpreter. I go all over King County and Pierce County, and I interpret for Spanish-speaking people. In several locations, I've had the opportunity to interpret for people who are experiencing homelessness. Some of them show up with the signs of the hard life of living on the street. But sometimes, I am pleasantly surprised, and it happens that they arrive clean, and they have an address, and it happens that it was the Federal Way Day Center. So they are, they have a better chance to solve their court case because they have a place where they're going to receive mail. They have a good presentation, so that they are in good standing to be treated more and be seen more as a regular human being with worth and dignity, not because we shouldn't see others without it, depending on their presentations, but that is what we do as humans. So this is an opportunity for justice, and it ripples in different places. So please, do not defund the Federal Way Day Center. We need turbocharged creativity. We can do it.
Good evening. My name's Jackie Muth, and I'm part owner of a building on 13th Place South. And we used to have a business there, too. We're now retired from the business. So no business on 13th Place South has escaped the trash vandalism, drugs, furniture that the clients of the Federal Way Day Center have left over the many years they have been there. We see this on a daily basis. When you turn the corner off 336 on the 13th Place, the trash, the shopping carts, the filth hits you in the face, and you wonder what you will need to pick up when you get to work. Again, shopping carts, drugs on your property that you will need to clean up before work. This is on a daily basis since the inception of the Day Center. And we have had four incidents in the past two months. On the day before Thanksgiving, someone walked into our building and stole our camera. On the 15th of December, someone defaced our sign. On New Year's Eve, someone defecated on our property. On January 5th, again, someone defecated on the property. So if you look at the corner of 336 and 13th, Valley Cities, across the street from the Day Center, is putting up a fence around their property. So what does that say? That they can't take it anymore? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Okay, we have Trinise Rogers on the phone, is that right? I have no more pink sheets, everybody. And before we get Trinise on the phone, we had four, excuse me, three written comments. They were provided to Council, and they're part of the packet, is that right? Were online? Okay. Those letters were Julie Saul, Karen E. Salinas, and Catherine North, all in favor of funding for the Day Center. And they've been made part of the public record. All right. And now do we have Trinise Rogers on the phone?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
All right, great. Thank you for allowing public comment. I just wanted to speak briefly. I was not intending on speaking, but I just wanted to share my thoughts, really. My first question is, who is responsible for issuing a permit to the Day Center directly across from the daycare, a large family apartment complex, and the Federal Way Public School bus facility? You know, initially, who's responsible for issuing that permit, right? That's my first thought. And also, in terms of who's missing from this conversation, of course, it's the homeless community, the very community we're talking about. They're missing from this conversation. During the last City Council meeting, when the council voted to withhold or pause funds for the Day Center, I took it upon myself to see what was really going on, because there was so much conversation about it, and I personally wanted to know what was going on with this Day Center, right? And so upon me personally visiting the Day Center, I realized the community, or the Day Center, made a decision to delay opening services for an hour. So they withheld services for an hour in lieu of having, so the people in the community and that were talking about would clean the area, right? That was one issue. There was debris and things. So as I approached this Day Center, hoping to speak with staff and understand what's going on, I was not allowed access, but I did spend at least an hour outside speaking to individuals that frequent the Day Center. And I was pleasantly surprised to hear that these are people who really want to be heard and want to engage on the city level. There is some trepidation, of course, because of some other outstanding concerns, but there are people who do want to engage on the city level as it relates to these topics. are people who do want to engage in the city level as it relates to these topics. I saw, I, I had an opportunity to meet and interview several individuals. One person I interviewed happened to be a person who previously frequented the Day Center, who was now transitioning to housing, who has now since started his own business, and he was there on site, volunteering his time and services with his personal equipment, cleaning the parking lot. And so we're talking about the transformation that happens for people that frequent the Day Center. That's just a small example of what I personally noticed. At least two individuals I spoke with, born and raised in Federal Way. These are Federal Way residents, I know there's been conversations about people coming outside of Federal Way, but I personally interviewed two individuals, a male and a female, and they're probably mid-30s, maybe early 40s, who are actually born and raised here in Federal Way. One is a veteran. When we're talking about moving forward, there are so many missed opportunities to really engage and hold people accountable for what's not going well. But I can tell you first and foremost, the staff, when I spoke with them, they were definitely wanting and hoping to make change in a positive direction. I saw from just their demeanor, there was a level of anxiety because there are conversations about the Day Center, and staff does have a sense of discomfort knowing that they are under the scope, they cannot control everything, but they are there and they are here in our community, to support our community. And it's an amazingity of a different level of collaboration, a different level of accountability, and a different level of expectation moving forward. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Trinise. I, I should also mention that Trinise Rogers is a longtime Federal Way resident and also the chair of our city's diversity commission. Thank you, Trinise. Okay, now, Council, we have a number of different items, but there is an item, I think we've got quite a number of folks here. Brian?
Do you want me to speak up the housing?
I will in just a moment. So what I would suggest, unless there's an objection by the Council, we have item 9A on Council Business, which, which is the Day Center briefing and authorization of human services grant funding, that's what the agenda item is. We're anticipating a staff presentation from Chris Greer. Chris, I see you back there. He is our Community Services Manager, and Leila Wilson, our Human Services Coordinator. That would be followed by a Day Center upgrade from Dan Wise, Agency Director, and Bill Hallerman, also Co-Agency Director, and then Council Discussion and Possible Action. Council, my, my thought is, Councilmembers have been...
Can we do the proclamations first? They're, they've been sitting on, so just get that out of the way.
Okay, let's do that. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll do the proclamations. So you guys get ready, we'll do, we're gonna do the proclamations. Maybe what, why don't we, Chris and Leila, if you guys could get your presentation all set up. Brian, why don't we do this right now? Let's do, can you explain where we're at, number one, with the Health Through Housing, which is the Extended Stay America on 320th, across the street from the Safeway, they're just west of Pack Highway? Also, what the status is of Red Lion, and to the extent that you and Keith, everybody, Keith Nivin is our Community Development Director, there's, there's a lot going on there, a lot of moving parts. I wanted to give you that piece first, and then there's been a lot of dialogue and a lot of work, collaboration, partnership, communication between the city and the Day Center. A lot of that has occurred with Brian Davis at my request, with the leadership of the Day Center, Dan and Bill and, and team, and also with, with Keith Nivin. So on those two points, Brian?
Yes, of course. So first, I'll talk about the former Red Lion, which is the slated for emergency housing under the Health Through Housing Program. That is, for those who don't know where it is, it's on 348th and right there as you come in off of Highway 18. We met with the county staff there on site last summer. We toured the building, most of it had been gutted in preparation for remodeling. We are working with them on the permitting aspect of it, and as far as building class and what to, what to call it in order to get it through the permitting process. We're, we're waiting on them for some additional information so that we can proceed with that. Parallel to that discussion, Sound Transit released its draft environmental impact statement on the Tacoma Dome Link Extension Light Rail project that extends from the, or that will extend from the Federal Way Transit Center to Tacoma. And there are four routes that are included in the environmental impact statement, two have, they impact the Red Lion site, the other two do not. It's unknown at this time what exactly those impacts mean. It's, you know, the light rail track clips the property, and a lot of times that's not a big deal. A lot of times, if you clip any portion of the property, the whole thing is, is wiped out. So we don't know the, what the effects of that potential impact could be at this time. We have met with Sound Transit and requested that because of this very discussion that we're having tonight with respect to shelter in Federal Way, that we would like an answer on that sooner than later. The environmental impact statement process is a very lengthy one, and it's not something that we can afford to wait in, in an unknown period of time whether or not the Red Lion will be impacted to the point that it's no longer a viable project. We don't want to be in that unknown. So we have requested Sound Transit to, to get us that information, and we're in, we are in communication with the county on making sure that we're, that they know that the city is still engaged on that project and that it is a priority for us. With regard to Extended Stay, we did issue their, this is the permanent supportive housing project, this is the, the former Extended Stay Hotel on 320th, just west of Pack Highway. It is, the Red Lion is emergency shelter, it's, it's temporary housing. Permanent supportive shelter, as the name implies, is more permanent, it's, it's longer term. It's intended to provide housing for those that are ready for more long-term housing, that, that need assistance, and that, that project, again, as I mentioned, we issued the, most of the permits for that project late last, this last summer. Now whether, as to the status of the mobilizing to actually do the permit, I don't have an answer for that, Mayor, but I know that from the city's standpoint, we have issued the permits for that to move forward at this time.
Let's reach out to HTH tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then Ben, our communications person, Ben, let's make sure we put out, be watching my, the city Facebook and social media sites, we'll get information out there. Ben Miller will get some information out there about where we're at with HTH and what the current status is. The, the company that's not in, the, the organization that's running that is?
Urban League.
Urban League. And so that was actually one of the speakers that was, that was on, on board to speak, but then dropped off. So we'll get a report out there to the community, and perhaps at the next city council meeting, we can have a brief presentation for those that don't see that. But I wanted to give you, could you also talk with the efforts or the ongoing efforts with, you know, Public Works, Community Development, police, and specifically you, in regard to how we're managing the situation at the Day Center?
The Day Center, yeah. So we have met with Bill Hallerman and Dan Wise, who are here tonight, and they, they're part of the Day Center staff, so they are Day Center staff here with us tonight. We appreciate their, their willingness to be here. We've met with them to talk about the, some of the concerns that have been shared tonight about the neighbors that have expressed frustration with some of the activity that has, that has, has come into the, into play, so to speak, since the Day Center opened. They, we know that the Day Center has, they have hired security to help with the site. They, they did go through, I believe, one security company that was, was not adequate in, in our minds and in their minds, and so they have moved on to another security office or security service provider, and they have since, just in the last week or so, have, have, have helped with cleaning, clearing up the property. There is also a, at the north end of the property, there is a property line that is not actually the fence line, and so we're dealing with a, a narrow strip of land that is actually the neighbor's property, and so they have, they have issued a trespass order for their, for their property, and the, the police department has provided warnings to those individuals that were, that had kind of set up camp there at the north end of the property, and provided them opportunities to, to relocate, and eventually got to a point where they did have to escort them off the property, so that they're not congregating there with, again, this isn't with the last, within the last week. We also have a code compliance department within the city that has unfortunately had to issue some citations to the Day Center for lack of compliance. That's not something that we want to intend to do regularly. CCS we view as a partner, and we want to work with them, but you know, if there is our issues that we're having to deal with, like some have expressed tonight, then that is something that we may have to resort to, but we don't, we don't like to. All that is to say, right now, at least as of a little while ago, the conditions are better, but it is an ongoing discussion that we're having with all parties to make sure that we provide for those in need while also protecting the businesses and patrons of the surrounding area.
Okay, we're gonna pick that discussion up later. Chris and Leila, it's just gonna be a moment. Our Council, good Councilmember on the end here, Councilmember Sephardosson has brought up a very good point. We've got two, we've got two brief presentations, and some folks have been waiting. Is Ally Blum here? There you are. With King County Solid Waste. Her department has nothing to do with this. I'm just kidding. Ally, thank you so much for waiting. I do have a, but, but do share what you heard tonight. This is a mayoral proclamation. Would you like to say a few words before I get started?
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you all about REPLUS. So REPLUS is King County's approach to our zero waste of resources goal, and where we're keeping valuable, valuable materials out of the landfill. Approximately 70% of what gets thrown away every day into our landfill is reusable. It's materials like cardboard, metal, food, wood, and more, and these are all materials that can be put to better, more useful purposes than just getting buried in the ground. So the goal of REPLUS is to minimize our environmental impact by moving towards zero waste while creating opportunities for everyone in King County to thrive. So REPLUS is an initiative that requires action on all levels of government, states, cities, counties, as well as our hauling partners and community members. So we are delighted that Federal Way is joining the 25 other cities that have demonstrated support through proclamation or pledge for REPLUS, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ally, and here's that proclamation, and I'll hand it to you after I read it. Mayoral proclamation. Whereas climate change is an urgent challenge with far-reaching impacts to our environment, public health, and economy, and whereas greenhouse gases, GHG emissions generated by waste disposal are a major part of our community's climate footprint, and whereas the city of Federal Way is joining King County in developing new strategies to reduce consumption-related GHG emissions, and whereas the mission of King County's REPLUS program is to reduce production of waste and encourage reuse and recycling to achieve the vision of healthy, safe, thriving communities in waste-free King County, and whereas the REPLUS program will help focus our joint efforts and responsibility to progress toward reducing GHG emissions by increasing waste prevention and recycling, thereby laying the foundation for a circular economy to ensure resources are conserved and to keep valuable materials out of the landfill. And whereas the city of Federal Way commends King County for its commitment to thoroughly and intentionally utilize existing resources rather than wasteful consumption of new resources, and whereas we recognize the success of REPLUS relies on collaboration with partners across the county, now therefore I, the undersigned mayor of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim support for the shared vision that REPLUS represents dated the 7th day of January 2025. Thank you. Okay, our next proclamation is Item B, Proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month, January 2025. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Before I read the proclamation, I'd like Councilmember Lydia Sephardosson to talk about the Red Sand Project. We attended the National Foundation of Women Legislators meeting in November in Atlanta, and this is, I think, the second time that we have participated in that program, and so she's going to talk a little bit about that program and what it means for human trafficking.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Honda. So the Red Sand Project is a project that recognizes human trafficking and the people who are impacted by it, and so you take Red Sand and, and fill in the gaps on pavements and roads where, and it represents that, what is it, they're not forgotten or lost in the tracks between the track, between the sand, what is it, the cracks, sorry. And so it just symbolizes that we're trying, human trafficking is real, and people are really impacted by it, and we don't want them to be forgotten or left behind. And so statistics that shared, that they shared with us at the National Foundation for Women...
Legislators.
Legislators. There's, it's, they're just alarming statistics. One is, it's estimated that over 27 million people are currently victims of human trafficking globally, including men, women, and children. And in the United States, thousands of trafficking cases are reported each year with countless others going unreported, and traffickers often exploit vulnerabilities such as poverty, homelessness, and lack of education, targeting individuals across all demographics. And so, like she said, we had attended two of these, and they're really heartwarming, and it makes you realize how important this work is, and we thank the people who are here today with us that do the work and that work with human trafficking in various ways, because a lot of them are lost, and they don't even know their rights, and they don't even know how to navigate and survive. So thank you for doing the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Kirsten Foote from the CEO and Executive Director of Business Ending Slavery and Trafficking, or BEST, and is Sarah Beth Rees here? She's Executive Director of Stolen Youth. And I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll bring it down to you. Excuse my voice, my grandchildren were visiting from Iowa and Washington DC for Christmas, and they left me a great present of having a cold from around the country. Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and crime explorer, explorer, I can't even say that word, the most vulnerable among us and weakening the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities across generations, and whereas an estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking, human trafficking, including cases of human trafficking reported in every U.S. state and territory. Whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, including people affected by abuse, by violence, poverty, unstable living situations, social disconnection, and discrimination. And whereas a successful response to human trafficking requires a coordinated community right effort, and whereas every individual, family, community, and organization can help to enhance human trafficking awareness, prevention, and response by learning about ways to help by going online to humantraffickinghotline.org. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the city of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, reaffirming the city's commitment to increase awareness and education on human trafficking. Signed the 7th day of January 2025.
Well, I'm so sorry to interrupt this discussion about the Day Center. I, I will admit, I don't live in Federal Way, although I am originally from here, and now I feel very invested in it, so I wish you all luck with this. But thank you so much to all. But thank you so much to all of you for, for having us here and for caring about human trafficking. And I loved it when you said you went to a red sand event. I actually have spoken at some red sand events and I know it's hard to imagine for everybody sitting in the audience, but if you look at pavement and you imagine cracks in the pavement all filled with red sand, it's something that, it's a visual that is really very impactful. And I just wanted to share with you quickly, because I know it's hard to imagine human trafficking and we hear these huge numbers, it's hard for the brain to, to really wrap your head around. In King County alone, roughly 500 to 700 children are trafficked for sex every year. And I will share with you that the current statistic is that the average purchase price for an hour with a child for sex is $90. So I'm going to let, I mean, just if you take a minute to think about that. So I just, I want to, I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the entire city council for caring about this, for inviting us here. This, you know, I am the Executive Director of an organization called Stolen Youth that focuses on fighting child sex trafficking and ending child sexual exploitation. And happy to receive this, but we receive it on behalf of all of the organizations across the state doing incredible work to fight this problem. And so I thank you. We will continue fighting the good fight for all of us and I wish you the best with the Day Center.
I too am grateful to the council and especially to Councilmember Safa Dawson and Councilmember Honda for your leadership and initiative in this. The wording of this proclamation is just fantastic. Thank you. Hundred percent endorse all that you've said. I am Kirsten Foote. I am the CEO, Executive Director of Businesses Ending Slavery and Trafficking. We're a nonprofit that works with employers in the public sector, government agencies as employers, as well as the private sector, to equip leaders and employees in all of these organizations to be able to intervene safely and effectively when they, when they are aware of indicators of human trafficking and ultimately to prevent it. So our organization's motto is that we need to drive traffickers out of business because right now it's just way too easy and cheap and profitable for them. We need to make it risky and costly for them. And BEST, Business Ending Slavery and Trafficking, is here to partner with city council, other city agencies, any business owners here. You can find our information on bestalliance.org, bestalliance.org. And we would be glad to be talking with you about how we can resource your organization through our awareness raising materials, consulting, and training services to help you as business leaders, public sector employer leaders, be proactive against human trafficking. Thank you again for this. We really appreciate it.
Council President.
Mayor, I'd like to invite the two ladies here to come back to make a presentation to one of our, to our parks, this Public Safety Committee. And perhaps Councilmember Walsh could arrange that so that we can get some information on how to fight that in our own community. I know that that's going on, but we need to have facts, figures, and what we can do about it.
Thank you. We specialize in training. We're happy to do that.
Thank you for your work.
We would love to have you for the, for the Parks and Public Safety Committee meeting.
I have just one business card with me. I'm sorry, I forgot, but who should I give it to? Did you want a picture before, a group picture before I leave, or is this the?
Yes, yes. Yeah, let's do that. And do we have, is Sarah Beth still here?
Yeah, she's still here.
Come on in. Should we all, we'll go down there. Let's just take a few minutes, everybody. We're going to come down with you, right there.
You're in the batting box.
Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. And I want to let everybody know, after we take care of item 9A, we will break for probably, probably a seven to 10-minute break, just because we've been sitting for a while and conducting this business, this important business. Can I get order, please? Okay, so we are in item 9A. We will return, we will go to the normal course of business here. Following that, after the recess, we'll do the council committee reports and the consent agenda. But let's start off with 9A. We've got our Day Center briefing and authorization of Human Services Commission grant funding. First, we'll have a presentation from both Chris Greer, our Community Services Manager, and Leila Wilson, our Human Services Coordinator, followed by the, the presentations of Dan Wise, Agency Director, and Bill Hallerman, Agency Director for the Day Center. With that, the floor is yours, Chris.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, Happy New Year's, everyone, number one. Number two, good evening, City Council, Council President, Mayor, Credway residents, community partners. I'm Chris Greer, the Community Services Manager, and I'm joined here by our Human Services Coordinator, Ms. Leila Wilson. Tonight, we are here, tonight, we are here to introduce the Federal Way Day Center, who has been aligned with our city for almost a decade, supporting our most highly vulnerable impoverished and homeless individuals and families, and might I say, children as well. Back on October 8th, 2024, we were one of the 34 recommended programs selected by the Human Services Commission to receive funding from our Human Services General Funds. Now, to give a quick background on our Human Services General Funds, these are government funds that are allocated to support a wide range of services aimed to meet the needs of those who are most vulnerable, low income, and marginalized. Now, services applicable under these funds are healthcare, housing, public health, employment, which are some of the services the Federal Day Center provides amongst others. Now, I just want to share to give a little bit more perspective. You know, as funding is being considered for the Federal Way Day Center, there are over 100,000 residents living in Federal Way, as you know. 14% are living in poverty in Federal Way, according to the Census Bureau. The Federal Way Day Center serves at least 1% of an impoverished population with their supportive services. Now, which means that there's an additional 13%, 13% of poverty-stricken, of a poverty-stricken population that are going unserved or underserved in the city, which includes, again, individuals, families, and children. Okay, so again, the City of Federal Way has been funding, as we know, the Federal Day Center since 2016, almost a decade, or about a decade. They opened their doors in 2016 to provide a space for unhoused and vulnerably housed individuals and families. Operated by Catholic Community Services, the Federal Way Day Center provides services Monday through Friday, approximately 8:00 AM, what I heard, to about 4:00 PM. Some of the services that are available from them are showers, laundry, computers, meal prep, access to healthcare and social services, case management, snacks, items, and clothing. Now, due to the recent challenges, as we know, and complaints experienced by the Federal Day Center, the decision to award 2025 funding has been delayed by city council because of the challenges that we are aware of. Some of those challenges, as we know, are loitering, littering, open drug use, public intoxication, community safety concerns, and trash buildup. Now, Catholic Community Services has reapplied for the City of Federal Way 2025 Human Services Grant Funds, which was selected, again, as one of the 34 recommended awardees by the Human Services Commission, as they were recognized for some of their impacts on the community in 2024. Some of the impacts were actually serving over 1,100 visitors, and 84% of those visitors actually identified as Federal Way residents. Also, one-time visits increased from 52% in 2023 to nearly 72% in 2024. So that's some of the impacts that they've had on the city in 2024, which is why they have been recommended for funding once again. So at this time, I would like to introduce the Federal Way Day Center, Bill Hallerman, and Dan Wise. Thank you.
Hi, guys. This is going to be a challenge. We are not the same height.
Yeah. My name is Bill Hallerman. I apologize for my voice. My grandchildren also left the deposit with me over the Christmas holiday that still is, that I'm still struggling with. But I'm the, the Agency Director for Catholic Community Services in King County. I'll let Dan introduce.
Sure, I'm Dan Wise. I'm also an Agency Director. We have many different parts of our agency, and so technically I'm with the Archdiocese and Housing Authority.
Okay. I think we're going to, we're just going to go back and forth a little bit with our slides. We've just got about 10 minutes of slides to go, and then I'm, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion and, and questions. So I'll let Dan start.
Sure. First, I just want to introduce you to our organization. So we are part of Catholic Community Services of Western Washington. In most other parts of the world, it is known as Catholic Charities. We work specifically under the Archbishop of Seattle and the Board of Trustees, and our employees come from many different faith traditions, and our services are open to everyone regardless of whatever faith they practice or don't practice. And our focus is sort of taking the service principles from the Catholic Church and putting them into action.
Okay. Just a tiny bit, and then we're going to focus a little bit more on the, on Federal Way. But just to give you a little sense of South King County especially, these are some of the other services that, that CCS provides in South King County. In Auburn, we have, we have services in Auburn, and Burien, and Renton, of course, out of the Federal Way Day Center, and, and the Federal Way Family Center, which is the same building, which we'll talk a little bit about in a second. In Covington, Des Moines, we have another family center in Kent, that's located in Kent. In all of South King County and all over most of the state, we provide long-term care services, which are home, home care, visiting, and prepares services as well. And we've been in Federal Way since 1980, so about 44 years. Yeah. So the, the actual, the, we've talked tonight about the Day Center, but the facility that's really on, on 13th Place is actually a family center for, for Catholic Community Services that also has a Day Center in it. It's a, a combined facility. So the facility, I wanted to just say a brief little bit about the other services that are out of that building, okay? We have accrued behavioral health services, which is outpatient mental health, outpatient substance use services, intensive case management services, and outreach and engagement. It's funded through Medicaid in King County. We provide services this past year to 374 unique clients with Federal Way zip codes, and that was in 2024. We also have housing and essential needs there, which is rapid rehousing and rental subsidy for disabled adults funded through the state of Washington and King County. We provided that rent assistance to 144 households with Federal Way addresses and 432 essential needs bags in, in 2024. One of our other programs that's located in the family center is our supportive services for veterans' families. Now, that's housing search, rental assistance for vets and their families who are having housing insecurity. It's funded through the VA. We served 116 veterans' families out of the Federal Way Day Center in 2024.
Yeah, so like Bill said, this is a building owned by the Catholic Church, and there's sort of a multi-service approach of services. All the services that Bill just mentioned are funded by federal county and state funds. Here's, there's a few others. So rapid rehousing, which is a King County-funded program that served 122 individuals in 84 households. That helps folks reconnect to apartments, folks that are experiencing housing instability. Engaged Health is a really interesting program. It's a partnership between King County Public Health and the University of Washington Harborview Medical Center. It's a full primary care medical facility. I know a couple of other folks touched on the fact that people need healthcare and treatment and services. Yes, check. All of that is provided, and it's part of the reason that we've kept, tried to keep folks engaged in coming to the Federal Way Family Center so they can see their doctor or their substance use treatment provider there. They served 311 unique patients last year. And then we have the very famous now Federal Way Day Center, which I think we've talked a lot about, and we will talk more about. That is primarily funded through private donations that we have raised, and then historically the City of Federal Way has supplied some funding too. Okay, so Federal Way Day Center has already been introduced to you in terms of the services, but it has basically a place for folks to prepare meals. Most folks on the streets don't have a way to get nutritious meals. I really appreciate in Federal Way, there are several places where you can get a pre-made meal, which is amazing and fantastic, and everybody needs nutritious foods. The other thing the Federal Way Day Center offers is a place for folks to actually come make their own food and share food in their community and get more into sort of the habit of like what you would do when you had an apartment. We do provide case management services. It is focused on folks that are all trying to survive, and I think it's been mentioned several times that there is no shelter down here, and so case management to shelter would normally be our primary activity, and it's made harder by the lack of shelter. A lot of referrals to health services and getting folks engaged in a path to treatment, showers, laundry, and other activities of daily living. Do you want to start, or?
Okay. So a little bit about some, some of which you know of the current kind of challenges that we're, that we face in this work. So obviously, there's a lack of affordable housing for people below 30% AMI, and that's, a lot of those folks are the folks that we serve that come to the Day Center. And the ability our staff works in that case management and those things are to work with folks in order to try to move them into housing. That's, that's a difficult thing to do at this time. There's also a lack of permanent supportive housing for people with disabilities, especially in South King County. That's why the Health Through Housing site is, we were super excited about that, though it's been delayed, so that's also made the situation for folks that are homeless worse in, in Federal Way because there, that not opening, there isn't any other one in town that, that we can refer folks into in order to have a housing option for folks.
Yeah. So a couple of times tonight, folks mentioned the shelter and the sort of delay of the Red Lion. I do want to just, for the, I guess, history books, so there was going to be a delay to the Red Lion, which we heard about. I actually worked with King County and assembled full funding for a different 24/7 shelter. I got a hotel partner to agree to lease us the space. I applied for the permit to the City of Federal Way and was told that we could not open because it was too close to the Day Center and the medical clinic and all of those other cool services that I just mentioned. And that was two and a half years ago. We were denied our permit. We appealed, we lost that appeal. And since that time, folks have not had shelter in the City of Federal Way. And basically, folks don't get better. If you're on the streets and you're stuck on the streets for many years, what you're seeing in your community is folks continuing to deteriorate. So I am hoping and pleading that after tonight, we can really engage in a true conversation that after tonight, we can really engage in a true conversation around how do we get folks inside. It's really desperately needed to get folks inside. The Day Center really is just that, a day place to be. And we all know that there's 24 hours in the day, and we really need folks to have access to indoor space all 24 hours. So I really invite ongoing conversations around how we engage getting folks inside.
A couple of the other challenges that you see there, and there are things that have been mentioned tonight, obviously, on the West Coast especially, the rise in substance use disorder related to the fentanyl crisis. That has made it difficult. Inadequate community behavioral health outreach. We have outreach staff that work out of the Day Center, but they are covering all of South King County. And so one of the things that's been, there's a need for a lot more behavioral health outreach throughout South County. And inadequate services for substance use disorder, which folks are probably very familiar with. You know, finally, I think that we're trying to improve this, we're working on this. I think there's been an inconsistent partnership with law enforcement here. And that's not surprising, given that the Day Center's open 40 hours a week, and there's another 128 hours every week for, that homeless folks have no place to go in Federal Way. So our, when we close every day and folks ask us, where can I go? Where can I go and nobody will bother me? We have no place to send them in Federal Way. And I know we got an update on the shelter and the Health Through Housing. Those were, those are crucial things for us because that's the way that we work with folks, is to move them into shelter, move them into housing. And without another option, it's very difficult. So we've met, about three weeks ago, we met with the chief to talk about, you know, what's going on around the Day Center. And we've also met with Commander, I've met with Commander Hodges to talk about what, to try to build, I think, a little better relationship with the Police Department and work together on stuff, though I think there's a lot of pressure on us. And I think the other thing, it's been a difficulty, just to say it straight, is when there isn't another place to send folks, it's appropriate to send people to the Day Center during the day when we're open? It's not appropriate to send them there at night. And so we've had some cases where our security guard at night has said that officers are sending folks there at night. So then that sends folks to us. Now, we talked with the chief about that, and he's assured us that he's talking with his officers about not doing that. You could send folks to the Day Center when we're open and not, we're not. The other thing, the last thing I'll say about that is I think the citation that you talked about, you know, Brian, we received that citation this morning, and that citation wasn't, it was made out individually to Dan Wise, not to CCS or the Day Center. And for me, I, that, I feel like that's inappropriate, that a staff person of ours would get a citation directed to them and not to Catholic Community Services or Day Center as we're working together to get through those things. So I, to me, that felt, that feels wrong. And though I know we're working on some of the issues, I want to say one last thing about that. So the things that we've done over the last month to try to improve that situation around the Day Center. So we've added staff that have come from other places in the agency to staff the Day Center in a more, a deeper way. We've also had those outreach folks that are spread out in South County work closer with the folks that are right outside the Day Center, although they have been working with them, you know, for a long time. But we've kind of refocused them on that. And that is, the team that does that is the crew, our crew team, and they work with Commander Hodges and others all during the year. So we brought them kind of closer into the Day Center to try to do that. As someone mentioned, as I think, Brian, you mentioned, we've added 24, we now have 24-hour security outside the Day Center. Just so folks understand that, in the last 30 days, the last month, we have spent $24,000. Catholic Community Services has money that we don't have to have security there after the Day Center's closed. So that's an incredible cost. I mean, that's half of what the $50,000 that's in front of you. That's for one month in order to have folks there who can keep folks, you know, those folks with no place else to go off of the property and try not to impact the businesses around us. And we've also, this past week, as folks said, we, as Brian, I think you said, we were able to get folks off the property line there from camping, and have worked closely and are working, you know, closely with Commander Hodges on that. But that has been a difficult struggle.
There has been a call upon CCS to sign a blanket notice of trespass, so then in the event that we're not open, the law enforcement can come and trespass folks for three years from our site. I think many folks today talked about the folk that the Day Center really is the only place providing any kind of service like this in Federal Way. It also is where people are getting their healthcare. And so sending folks away from their healthcare for three years will not make them better. Having them outside will not make them better. What we want to focus on is solutions. So we know that folks get better inside, and they have consistent access to care, and we would like to work with the city. Now, you can personally come after me and my family if you want, or we can sit down and talk about ways to open shelter and get folks inside and get them on a path towards housing. I invite the city, please, to engage in that conversation. CCS has tried to work with you. We will continue to stand up with you. I have been a social worker working on housing insecurity for 25 years in King County. I am not going away. I will be here because there's folks outside, and their lives are worse off when they're outside, and we need to help bring them inside.
I think that's all that we have.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Chris, did you relay what the city's recommendation, what my recommendation is?
I don't have the form in front of me, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I don't have the form in front of me.
Brian?
The three options?
Number three.
The agenda packet?
And the agenda memo that you wrote?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me right now, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, the mayor's recommendation is to postpone the funding, again, for a period of time up to the council's discretion. Last time, it was about three months. And given the conditions of the last three months, it's the mayor's opinion that they have not met that, at those standards. And so he's recommending to neither fund it nor defund it, but to delay a decision for another three months.
Okay, thank you. Keith, is there a reason why Dan's name was listed specifically on the citation?
I'm gonna punt that one to the city attorney, who worked with code compliance on that.
Ken?
Yeah, so infractions cannot be issued to an entity. They have to be issued to an actual person. Under our code, they're issued to the person who is responsible for the violation. That's why we cite an actual person who is responsible for the property at issue.
All right. There's been an ongoing, ongoing, daily, weekly, monthly coordination. EJ, will you talk briefly about all the debris that Public Works picks up?
Yeah, so Public Works's staff is out there Monday through Friday. We show up between typically 6:30 and 7:30 and remove everything from the right of way. So we do not go onto private property, but from the sidewalks of the street. And we remove anywhere from a couple of bags to a dump truck load daily.
Okay. Chief, can you explain this trespassing? Does that, does that mean that they wouldn't be able to come back for three years? Or does that, what is the status of the request? And why did the Police Department request the trespassing letter?
Okay, maybe I could give an overview of what impact the Day Center has had on our community. I will tell you that Day Center's presented a significant challenge for the Police Department. We are there multiple times a day because of businesses, residents complaining about criminal activity. You name it. You got drug dealing, you got assaults, you have stolen vehicles, residential burglaries. It's hard to quantify and measure the level of crime that's occurring in the region, that area. But every now and then, we'll be able to draw a connection to a Day Center client, to a burglary, and so forth. So it's been ongoing, but I would tell you, probably in the last few months, it's gotten worse just because the Day Center, Catholic Community Services, has allowed a tent city to develop. So I would say between 30, 20, 30 people living on site, what that does is that it brings criminal activity, ongoing drug sales, drug deals, overdose. The relationship with Day Center staff has been labored. They've told us on a number of occasions, they don't want us on their property. So just giving you an overview of what's been going on. In terms of the trespass notice, all the neighboring businesses around there have signed, you know, permanent trespass notice because of the impact with the Day Center clients. Day Center is not wanting to sign. The trespass notice limits our ability. The property owner, you have property rights. You can decide what you want to do with that property. If you don't want to give police authority to trespass people overnight, we don't have the authority to do it. We need that cooperation. So bottom line is, we can't enforce it. But I'll tell you what, the last two or three days, it's been, the clients are gone. Most of them have left Federal Way. And I keep hearing they're Federal Way residents. Our experience, Day Center's a regional draw. Many of them are not from Federal Way. We have newcomers coming regularly. It's a regional draw. And other jurisdictions are telling people to go to the Day Center in Federal Way. So that's our experience. We hear that differently, but from police experience, when we check their DOL address, we have people from Vancouver, Sea-Tac. Some of them have Day Center address now because that's where they're getting their mail, but many of them are coming regionally. So I hope that gives you, from a Police Department, significant challenge for us every day.
It does. Keith, anything to add?
So my part of this puzzle is code compliance, and I have code compliance going out weekly multiple times to check for violations. You know, a lot of the residents are calling to complain that there's junk just sitting in the parking lot. Well, that stuff is, belongs to somebody who's a client of the Day Center. So it's technically not a code violation if it's owned by somebody, just because it's unsightly. And so part of the difficulty for my team is ascertaining where there's a code violation and where there's not. And I think that's where we stepped in because of the camping. The camping is clearly not allowed in that zone, on that property, and so that's why the citation was issued.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna go in order, starting on that end. We'll count Councilmember Dovey, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember McDaniel. Casper, Dovey?
Yeah, I have a few questions, and I don't know where to direct them all. But, you know, in listening to everybody, I think everybody's got the same concern. How do you fix a problem? I mean, it's, everybody in this room knows we have a problem, and it's how are we gonna fix it? Or how are we gonna sort it out so the people get some help? But I have a question. It was mentioned on the slide. 1,115 visitors come to the Day Center. And I'm curious, and maybe you could answer this question. How many of them are like regular? I mean, is it randomly different? Or is it the same 150 come 10 times? Or how do you break that down?
Yeah, so we have, we look at two different things. So that number is everybody who came even one time if it was just to like, you know, check out the facility or use the bathroom. We also look at frequent visitors. So frequent visitors are folks that use the Day Center 90 days or more. And those are all numbers that we provide to the human services. And that group tends to be about 350 people that are coming like regularly, trying to engage in care and service.
So the number's about 350?
For the night, for the frequent visitors.
And the question I have is, you're open eight to four, and the problems are probably less between eight and four than they are from 4:15 to 7:30 in the morning because people don't have anywhere to go. Would the issue change if all of a sudden you had more money and you stayed open 24/7?
So we spend about 350, yeah, I think it's about $350,000 a year operating just the Day Center portion. Obviously, all of those other services we mentioned are differently funded. Again, the city has historically funded about $40,000 of that. So we don't, you know, raising $300,000 is pretty hard. We also have heard very specifically from the City of Federal Way that folks cannot stay overnight at that facility, and we have honored that agreement with the city.
I'm just curious, if you had another $350,000, would you stay open 24 hours?
I think what we would want to do is work with the city to find out where you thought it was best to shelter folks and do it there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Casper Walsh?
Yeah, a few questions. One, this may be more for the chief, I'm not sure. But the trespass order, can it be for just trespass for specific hours rather than at all?
Sure, we could customize it in that way, but we would need Day Center to willing to prosecute if someone refused to leave. We need, we need that backing from the property owner that they want to enforce it.
Okay, so it sounds like that, you know, as I heard of, the Day Center was reluctant to, you know, go ahead with trespass because they, then people wouldn't be able to come at all. However, it sounds like that is not the case. So I'm suggesting that maybe that that could be something that could work out so that on those off-hours, people are trespassed, but not during the, not during the open hours. And, you know, and I asked the Day Center if that's something that they'd be willing to work with.
I'm reluctant to kind of speak on that because it was a question that the Day Center had inquired about, and it was told that they were not able to admit that. There is an insertion where otherwise specified that maybe gives the Day Center the discretion to implement that change or request, but they were told no.
Yeah, I would encourage the City of the Day Center to work on resolving that issue then. Another question is, you know, the last month or so, you've had 24-hour security, but it seems like the problems have once again peaked. And with that 24-hour security of late, why has it peaked even with that security?
Yeah, I don't think that it's peaked. What we did have to do, which I think someone mentioned, Brian mentioned, is that we had, we hired 24-hour, you know, that service about a month ago or a little more. And the security company that we hired was not making sure that the site was, you know, was kept empty. So we had to discontinue that contract and then started a new contract with a different security company that has, honestly, has done much better and gives us, you know, video and reporting every morning and like, and at least in a much more, I think, professional way. And that's made a difference. That's the difference that folks have talked about the last, you know, five, four, five days. Once we were able to clear the site, it's been kept clear, you know, overnight. Now, again, the challenge of that, you know, it's $20,000, $24,000 a month. And that's, that's, you know, partially, I think, what I, what we'd rather see is that those dollars go to shelter or something, another solution that would really help us as opposed to paying the security person. So that's what we're hoping is to get to that point, or head in that way.
And another question. How can myself or other city council members arrange a visit to the Day Center? So that we can see in person what, how it's operated?
Sure. I can just reach out through Chris and through us, and we're happy to set up a time.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I mean, I want to be able to fund the Day Center. I dearly want to be able to fund the Day Center. But it's, I think it's critical that the Day Center is, as Betty said earlier, it's a matter of compliance. And she was quite emphatic on that, and I think that it's applicable that it's really, I think, in the hands of the Day Center now on whether, I'm speaking for myself, but I think I speak for at least some other members of the council on whether that funding comes through. And I support the mayor's proposal on another three months to see whether that works. I mean, the three days that there's been right now is not, is not enough. But I mean, I think that the Day Center provides some valuable services. You know, I also, I cannot imagine You know, I also, I cannot imagine what it would be like to be, be homeless on, on the street. But there, I think that we need to, the, the Day Center needs to take responsibility. And also, there needs to be measures to help the clients take responsibility for their own lives. And with that, I, I fully agree that there, that the Day Center cannot do everything. I mean, that, that's, that's not practical. And there needs to be treatment programs that, that are, that are ongoing, that are, that there needs to be beds for that. And I'm, I'm disappointed that the county with, and the state, I, I don't think that our state legislator is here anymore, but I mean, I think that the, that the legislature and the, and the governor and the, the county council and county executive needs to make funds available for treatment because that is the, the basis of it. There needs to be funds for treatment. And the city simply does not have that type of funding. The fifty thousand going towards the Day Center, that's, that's a major contribution by the city. We can't, simply don't have the funds for, for treatment, which there needs to be. And that's the more long-term solution. But, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question. CCS operates many different, at many different locations. You know, you name Auburn, Kent, and, you know, some other city. Do these locations experience the same issues that we experience in Federal Way?
Well, we have a similar, we have a similar Day Center in Kent. We have, the Kent Day Center is open similar hours. And we haven't had the issue, like, we don't have night security at that, at the facility in Kent. And some of that is, some of that is because I, I mean, there's, there's other places, I think, for, that folks are able to sleep, you know, in the community outside, sheltered. And so, you know, we don't have it. We have, we just have a, like a drive-through person that comes through a couple of times a night. So we haven't had as much of an issue as we have had here, honestly. So I don't know, Dan, what else you want to share about it?
Yeah, I would say in the City of Kent, our behavioral health outreach team works really closely with law enforcement, and they go out regularly to outreach folks who are in encampments and engage them in services. And there's kind of a real collaborative relationship there to try to get folks connected. We do have permanent supportive housing that we operate in the City of Kent, and so we're able to divert folks to housing. And when there are issues, we just, you know, kind of sit down and try to problem solve them in a collaborative way, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be honest, this is a pretty big emotional ping pong tonight with these conversations going back and forth. A majority of people came out supporting it, come from a church who's not actually in Federal Way, but they came out strong support. And the ones who were not for it are the ones who actually live in the City of Federal Way. And then, listening to this, the, the key words that I heard most of the time is compassion, the non-compliance. But in the end, there's winners and losers, and the ones who are losing right now are the ones who really need help. I think there's more that needs to be done than just providing a forty thousand or fifty thousand dollar check to a group who has the Day Center and that stuff like that. The housing, the housing issue is a big one, and I still do not understand why after a year and a half of being up here, why that one's not open. So I mean, I'd really want to get to the end of that one and dig down deep. And I want to know if there's any legal recourse we have on them not opening that. I mean, I'm not even joking, if it's needed to sue King County, then I'm supporting suing King County to get that moving.
Yeah, and if I could, just of, they, four years ago, in 2021, the county executive called me and, and asked whether they could use that for Afghan, emergency Afghan refugees. And that was through the end of that year, and we assumed, you know, that when twenty-two would start. So this has really been, and then we actually, one of the things we did is when, I'm sorry, the name of the group again?
Urban.
Urban, like, thank you. So when the Urban League, you know, was, was identified as the group, not only did we meet them over there, there, I took yet, like, either my second or my third tour of that facility, and I, and actually, the, the chief, the Chief of Staff for the County Executive was there, and I said, we really need to make sure there's a presentation before the full City Council. That was done, it took a while before that was done. So the delay is, it's very difficult to figure out why that is not happening.
Yeah, well, like you said, we'll, we'll definitely get to the bottom of that one way or another. The other one is, is why now? Why did it take till now for you guys to come and talk to us? I mean, I know this has been on the, on the dockets for probably a year back and forth with conversations, and it feels like it, it wasn't important enough to have this conversation until now. And I'd like to know what changed? Is it because of the legal steps the city took, something we found out about in emails of the citations and stuff like that? Is that what brought this connection finally for you guys to come forward? And then, in all this conversation, I felt some hostility in your guys' comments. You didn't like that you got personally named in this legal issue, or the fact that you fill the city's police office is not working with you. I see a lack of communication, a lack of engagement between both organizations here. And right now, like I said, the people get hurt, the people who need help. So you mentioned the hotel. I understand why the hotel's not open, it's within too close of a distance, something was in black and white and illegal documents stating that you could not open it. Even if you could open that hotel, how many beds does that hotel have? And how long would it be before you filled them up? And when you filled them up, what would happen to the leftover people? And what would you do for the people who were in the hotel? Would you kick them out? Do they have a certain amount of time? I mean, there's a lot more questions that I'd like to know about the next step on what the use of that hotel is, because that hotel is a viable option, but it's a short term. And it's limited seats. So it's, again, is it first come, first served? What happens when it fills up? Do you move them on somewhere else? Or what's that next step? Treatment's a big issue. Drug treatment, in my mind, is one of the keystones that we are not even talking about. We have no true treatment facilities that I know of locally, and even if we get these guys housing, treatment is huge. If you put someone in housing and you put an alcoholic or someone who's recovering, that recovery is going to be affected by having someone there who's still using. That's a huge issue in my mind. I'd love to have a larger conversation on treatment. Where's that possible? What's going on with the building across the street? Is that still an option? And then, the twenty-four thousand dollars per month on security. My question to the two representatives of the Day Center, do you feel what happens at night is acceptable? And if it's not acceptable, who do you think should have to pay to mitigate that? Because right now, if you guys don't pay for it, the city does. The city has to pay for it, there's technically taxpayers that have to pay for it. I've talked to the local businesses around that area, and where's the compassion for them? Those people go to work, they have to clean up the mess, they have to deal with the situations that are presented to them, and they have to make a living. And then on top of that, they have to pay the bills. So I have a lot of compassion for a lot of people in this situation. But what I have an issue with is the feeling of a blame game going on and not coming to a, an understanding of what is best for the residents of the City of Federal Way and the people you're trying to help. No one here has a problem with the services you guys are offering. Most of them make sense. It's the aftermath that happens after that four o'clock. And up to about four or five days ago, it was disastrous. And it gets cleaned up, and then it goes back, and then it gets cleaned up, and then it goes back. I don't understand what causes it to get so bad. I understand what cleans it up is twenty-four thousand dollars in security, but I don't understand what causes that issue to keep going back and forth. I think the forty thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars is a small piece of what we're talking about now. I think there needs to be some bigger solutions. And if King County is the place that owns the buildings that we need to get access to, then they need to be brought into this conversation, and I don't care what we have to do to make that happen.
Well, I'm going to make something abundantly clear. There will not be a tent city at this location, period. So we will address it. There will not be a tent city at this location. So we can do it one way, or we can do it the other. So, Councilmember Rhonda?
Thank you. So in 2024, the point in time count in King County reported that there were sixteen thousand people homeless in King County. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, I have heard that nation, nationally homelessness has increased by eighteen percent, and it has increased most on the, on the West Coast, which includes Washington, which includes King County, which includes us. I don't see a solution to the Day Center issues until we get shelter. And I wrote these notes this afternoon before Councilmember McDaniel just talked about King County, but I believe Paul and I went through the extended Day Center, Day Hotel, a long time ago, like eighteen months ago, maybe?
Long time.
And there were probably ten King County staff people there with us and a couple people from the city staff. And we asked them, what, what's a holdup? Why can't we put people who need housing here? The rooms were all set up, they, the beds had linens on them, there were dishes in the, the little kitchenettes. And they said it was us, that we were preventing them from letting people move in. There's no one on this council that was preventing anyone from moving in. We want people there. So that was eighteen months ago, at least, and there's still no one in there. And I don't see when anyone is going to get in there. I don't know what they need to do to make it usable, because it is usable. It was usable before for the refugees that were here and needed housing. It's usable now. And I just don't understand the problem as to why we can't get people in there. With what's going on in our country, with the increase in homelessness in our country, we will see more issues in King County, and it's going to impact us. And as a council, maybe it's time we wrote a letter as council to King County to get moving on this. We have waited way too long. This is ridiculous. As to the Red Lion, I was told that the building is not inhabitable, excuse me, that there is too much damage to it. But I was also told that it's possible that maybe the Day Center can be relocated over there, which would be a better location for it. The emergency housing would be right next to it, to the Day Center, would work out better for the folks using the Day Center that don't have housing, to have the housing right next door to the Day Center. I don't know how fast that can happen because I don't know the condition of the Red Lion. I've just been told that by staff. And once again, King County is taking our tax dollars, and they're not using our tax dollars the way that they told us they were going to use our tax dollars. We have to be firmer with King County and say this isn't acceptable. The other hotels that King County purchased are up and running. Ours is not. It's not acceptable. And it's not going to get better in Federal Way until we get some shelter. I, I would like to ask the Day Center folks, thank you for coming, the fifty thousand dollars, what exactly does that go towards that the city provides?
Historically, it's funded part of our case manager's salary.
So do you currently have, without the fifty thousand dollars, do you have a case manager?
Yeah, I mean, we have been fundraising to keep the Day Center open all along, and so, you know, Bill mentioned the increased costs. We'll just keep trying to fundraise, I guess, yeah. I will say that I'm happy to come anytime I'm invited. So I was specifically invited by staff and came down, happy to talk. We've had a whole bunch of conversations with a whole bunch of folks in the City of Federal Way. So that is always open.
I have two other questions.
Yeah.
On, on the folks who are using the Day Center who clearly need drug and drug treatment and mental health care, are they offered that? And if they refuse treatment, how do you work with them to get them trusting you enough to provide the treatment?
Yeah, it's a good question. So we feel like we're on a journey with folks, so it's consistent engagement. You know, the first time we meet somebody, it might just be smiling and looking them in the eye, which is something they don't encounter a lot out in society. And we do have that full clinic there. They do have substance use treatment offered through that healthcare clinic. We also have wonderful partnerships with like Evergreen Treatment that spoke earlier, and our own Crew Behavioral Health that does substance and mental health services on site. So it's just consistently trying to get to know folks, make a connection, encourage them. And also, the other thing I want to say is, it's not like treatments like this moment in time, right? It's like, recovery is hard, there's a lot of stumbling, and so just staying in relationship with folks long enough that we can kind of keep on that journey is important.
My next question is, do you know why Valley Cities is putting a fence up around their property? Because I noticed that when I, I drive by there at least twice a day, except the last couple of days because I was sick. But I, yesterday, when I drove by, I noticed that a fence is going up. Do you know why they're doing that?
No, I don't. We were told in an earlier meeting that there's been a lot of encouragement of folks to not be at other places in the city, and kind of, we have seen an increase in our neighborhood while that was happening. So I do think it's kind of comes down to like, folks need to be somewhere. So again, just trying to make sure that we're, you know, being good partners with the city and finding out where they can be.
And my next question is, so the people who have been camping on the property and who have been standing under the eaves of the building when it's been raining so hard at night, where are they now if they're not there? Where did they go?
You know, I, I don't know. I don't know where they are, other than, you know, we, we just, we let folks know that we were not able to, you know, to have folks on the property without staff there. And so we worked with, we worked with folks over a couple of week period, telling folks about that, that this was coming, and that, and talking with folks and saying, you have to find somewhere. And, you know, we don't have a great answer, Councilmember, when they say, well, tell me where to go. And then we're back to that same thing. It's like, at this point, we were supposed to have a, you know, a shelter open or a place to refer them and say, hey, well, we have the place for you. Here, let's get you into the shelter. Let's, let's work with you to move you into housing or to have the other services that we have at our other shelters and our other places. But we, there's, I don't have any place to send them, so I don't know where they all went.
And would you be willing to move the Day Center portion of your program over to where the Red Lion is?
I think, I think so. We'd, we'd be happy to talk about that, yeah. If there's a facility there, that's, if that's a better location for the, the Day Center over at the Red Lion you're, you're talking about, be happy to talk about that. Would, would be happy, happy to do that. I, I think it just depends if there's a facility ready or, you know, all those things, but, but happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Council President and Councilmember McDaniel, Councilmember Sepa Dawson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, we're talking like the shelters are going to solve your problem, they aren't. The extended stay of the county told us was only going to be a hundred and one beds, and of those hundred and one beds, first they said eighty-five would be hardcore drug users from, or addiction folks from Seattle. Then they said, well, it would only be fifty. So you're talking maybe fifty-one beds that could be from people other than from the Seattle area for that extended stay. And that's the one where Councilmember Honda is saying that it appears to have kitchenettes and things ready to go. The other shelter is Red Lion, and I believe we heard from the county that that, our staff, that that was the, everything was down to the sheetrock or beyond because people had been cooking meth in there, because that had been overnight folks living in there cooking meth. And, and that has to, and I think the county has to be the ones to fix that. That area would probably be better for you, although there's a Denny's right there. But we have, you know, there, we're not against you, we, we want to help. And Dan, I'm glad you went to the Stevenson Motel and, and tried to get that one up and going, but it, it's not going to work. It doesn't even have that many beds, and it's too close to where you are right now, according to our ordinance. But there were, those were us on the council, including the mayor, that were there when Lynn Ormsby and folks from St. Vincent's and others came with the hundred thousand to start the Day Center. We, there were people on this council who were very happy to welcome you to our community. And the, so it's developed into a problem. And our, you know, our mission as Christians is to take care of people. However, our mission as elected officials is to protect people. And you have businesses that you have to ask what cost they're having to, when they replace their doors that have been bashed replace their doors that have been bashed in, or, or, um, they have to move. I mean, we, we have to protect our businesses as well. So what is the solution here? You know, I've heard Valley Cities is putting up a fence. Would a fence solve your problem? Why is it the multi-service center has never had tenting on their property? They're right next door, and they have the food bank right there. I mean, I, I don't know why the problem is, other than people are being told to go there. And then, and I know personally, I've seen previously where I saw a person drive up to the woods across the street on three thirty-six and drop people off. They opened up their trunk, they took the stuff out of the trunk, and the people walked into the woods, and that's where they were left. And so maybe they're coming from other areas. I know they're coming in off the buses, because there are times of the day where I see people coming down from the buses, the transit garage, and I think it's only going to get worse when light rail comes in. And, and even right now, we have people who are congregating around fourteen South and three twelve. Why they're right around Vaughn's Chicken and right behind H Mart there, I don't know why they're now in that area. But what we, our job as a city is to provide protection, public safety, and to help. Okay, so how do we do all that? It's, it's a terrible, one thing, I think our legislators, if they're listening, would be very good at doing, is if they would then make, uh, you know, we have the drug dealers who are going right into these encampments, and they're selling in the encampments. They're, I believe they're the people, the guys on the bikes with the helmets and the backpacks. I think they're going right into the drug encampments and selling. You know, it doesn't cost much for fentanyl or heroin, twenty bucks or less. Don't give money on the street, that's what they're going to use it for. We have wonderful people who are providing food if it's needed, dinners. We have food at the food bank. People have been giving money there for, during the holidays. We have two food banks. And we have people who are very generous in this community, but we can't let you do what, we can't let what's happening going on. So we need to figure out the solution. We can't just say, well, it's this or that. There's a solution here. And so I think that if we all get together, we're going to figure it out.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman McDaniel?
Actually, Councilmember Honda, I had my question to them, is they would, the Red Lion was a legitimate opportunity. I know they have the pool house, it's probably not effective with the meth scenario, so I'd like to add that to the King County conversation on if that property is available for us to discuss for the longer term situation.
All right, I'll commit, I'll call the Chief of Staff to the King County Executive tomorrow. Um, Brian, let's, yeah, let's, uh, first thing in the morning, let's get on the phone to the Executive's Office and, and see if we can address that, and, and get some answers to some of these questions. Uh, Councilmember Sephardoson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for all your comments and questions. Some of them I was going to ask, but I also want to thank the public and staff, CCS staff here. Your program is worthwhile, we need it, because you provide services that people don't get otherwise. Having a mailbox, having address, having somewhere to cook, take a shower, do laundry. I mean, that, those are just great things that our unhoused population needs. But of course, we're talking about the unintended consequences or issues that happen after, after they leave your, your program at four o'clock. And so I know you're, you said you hired someone and it's costing you money, and I don't think that's sustainable, to continue paying, what, twenty-three thousand a month? It's got, yeah, at some point, you know, there's a breaking point. So my one question was, what is that? What is that? Where do you say, we can't do this anymore, and we, it's not sustainable, we need to stop? And then the other question I have for you is, would that be to a point where then, or if we don't fund, if the council decides not to do the fifty thousand, does that mean the Day Center would shut down? But also, I'm wondering if there's accountability that the participants have to adhere to, where if they, you know, after hours, if they do A, B, C, D, then they can't come back, or whatever that is. And I, and I hate to put those stipulations, because a lot of them are already, um, they have a difficult time complying, or, you know, they have issues. And so I feel like that's even being harsh, but I, we need something, and we don't know what that something is, or what that solution is. So I'm wondering if maybe there's even a peer that could be paid, somebody who can really help navigate and manage the population that is causing the problem at night or after hours. And also, how about partnering, and I don't know if you do, not just the county, but partnering with Valley Cities, because they do provide, um, prevent, um, programs, and they do have beds. I mean, we've been at, um, presentations where they've told us that they've had, that they have programs for treatment centers and stuff. So I'm wondering if those are in the works, or if you guys have those conversations, or if not, then it's not a possibility? Because I think communication is very, is valid, and they're next door, so I'm, I'm just wondering if there's just a solution to this issue, because I'd hate to see it closed, because the program is valid. But then, the, the problem is also there. It's real. And so how do we find a way between us, you, King County, and other agencies to come up with a program, or to, to partner, not even a program, to partner, because what we're talking about, we can't keep talking about over and over, so.
Um, yeah, uh, thank you for the question. There's a lot of questions there. Um, we do actively try to partner with every organization in the area. Health Point was here as well, and organizations all over. We do often have to ask folks to be on what we call a service fold, if they're not complying with the sort of behavioral expectations of the space. And then we have an entire care review process that involves our clinical director to try to see what they need in order to reengage. It's pretty challenging down here, because often they're like, well, I just need to be, and all the other businesses in the area have trespass notices, and I'm told not to be at the park, and they're just a little stuck with where to go. So I, I do feel like the conversations are a little strained down here because of that. In terms of would the Day Center close, the Day Center is a program of the Catholic Church, and the building is owned by the Catholic Church, so there's other more important people than me that would make those kind of decisions. I know y'all issued the citation to me, but I don't own the building, the church does, so obviously the Archbishop would get involved. I can see why you didn't want to cite him. But, um, I, uh, you know, there's, there's bigger things in play, I guess.
You know, there have been businesses that have been run out. Carolyn Hoover, who was here, had a business here for thirty-five years. Her business shut down because someone ran a truck through the front of it and put her out of business. Another business, right next to Joe's Deli, had to leave. Another business, on the other side of Joe's Deli, had to leave. This is, you know, well, this isn't funny. This is, this is something, and, you know, every business, whether it's, there are fourteen thousand people every year that receive services at King County Public Health. No one's camping on their property. So this is, this is a matter of, we are not going to allow on this property illegality, period. We could do it one way or the other, but it's not going to happen. So that, that's, this is not, this is not a failure on the City of Federal Way's part. We've made it clear, businesses have suffered, we have talked and talked and talked and talked. You received a citation because you're allowing people to illegally camp on the property, and that's not allowed. Councilmember Doby?
I, I just have two questions, you as the experts. How many people can actually be in the Day Center at any given time? What, is it forty, fifty, seventy, or what's the, you know, how many could actually be there?
Yeah, I think, I forget what the, the number is, because the, the staff could tell. But there is a certain number, you're right, that, that's the, kind of the limit of it.
And am I right in taking away from what I heard Dan talk about earlier, that you serve about three hundred and thirty-eight regular people every month? Could you, I think I heard that.
Oh, yeah. Uh, no, so I quoted the number of folks who use the Day Center ninety days or more in a year, so it's not like, and also, the other thing is, it's not that folks like come and stay all day, right? Like folks come and go.
Yeah, they come and they leave, but they have no place to go. Right? I mean, that's kind of the...
Yeah, folks come, like, some folks might come and, and check in with their mental health provider, and, uh, you know, access the kitchen. It doesn't mean that folks are, are there all day long.
So when I do the math in my head, this is what I'm trying to ask, the question. We were at the National League of Cities, and the guy from King County, the statistic from Washington, University of Washington, said you have about one percent of your, your people would be homeless at any given time, and federal way, that number's six hundred, if you use that, the statistics the UW put forward, the, the statistician. So do we need three hundred and thirty-eight beds a night here? Or, I mean, if you had a, not, we don't have, we don't have...
Yeah.
...a place, but if you had, how many beds really?
The, uh...
UW, you being the expert, seeing all the people that's causing all the problem for everybody, how many beds do we actually need?
Yeah, the State of Washington Growth Management Act actually lays that out for the city and has a very specific chart and metric around the amount of shelter and housing beds you all are supposed to have.
There's another point I want to make clear, and the chief actually held back on this. We had a burglary in this town. A car was stolen out of a business. It was driven to the Day Center. Our police officers saw the vehicle at the Day Center parking lot, and the staff refused for us to look at their film or to, and, and told us basically to come back with a warrant. So that's, that's what's, which is becoming a center of crime. Is there, do you have anything else?
Just what the number of beds could be.
Okay.
I mean, we've, we've talked all around this.
We have.
It's very, yeah, I mean, we're not going to fix anything tonight.
No.
But I just, if you had a billion dollars showed up tomorrow because it came from Mars or whatever, I mean, how many beds are we talking about? What's the...
Well, that's a, that's not, that's not germane, that's not germane to the point. Is there a motion with regard?
Could, I have one, I have a question.
Yeah.
The folks that have been camping on the site and who gather at night and stay under the eaves and stuff, are they actual users of the Day Center, or are they homeless folks in federal way that have no place to go?
Some of them are users of the Day Center, and then some may be, you know, not users of the Day Center. But we communicated with everybody, that's how we were able to get folks off the, you know, those who use the Day Center. We, we've had to withdraw services, as Dan said, from folks and tell them, you're, you know, you're not able to use services here. That's what we communicated to those folks, and then, and then ended up cooperating with Commander Hodgson and his team to have those folks removed.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
And then we're going to have to make a motion to extend the meeting past ten, but at one point within the last few years, I think you guys were opening a family time at the Day Center, which was after the time that the adults were there. Is, did you do that, and is that still a program there? Where children, where families with children could go without having to be around the, the adults that were there?
We, we are helping some, some families or some folks who come that would, would show up late in the day and didn't have, you know, any, any help, and especially if the other resources in federal way were full, and there wasn't any place for a family. So I know, like, Chris stopped by the other day, and there was a woman and a, a three-year-old that stopped into the Day Center late in the day. And so our staff stayed and, and made sure that we got a place for that person to go that night. So we don't, it, it's not, you know, we're not PR-ing it out there, but if anyone, there's families that come that need a place, we will work with them and try to get them to safe shelter for that night. So I do want to, I do want to respond, Mayor, just for a second. You know, there's nothing funny about this to us.
Right, it's not.
And to, since, that, that really makes me angry, that you think we're laughing about this. We've spent our life doing this, and it is painful and hard, and, and we see that suffering every day. So I, I share your frustration, but I'm telling you, it's not because we're being flippant about it or anything else. We're doing, we're, we're working hard, and we're doing the best we can do. And I hope, I hope you know that. And when I say, yeah, we, there's stuff we can do better, and we're working to try to do those things better, but there are also things that federal way can do better. There's, you know, there's nine hundred and sixty-two days in a row without a shelter here. Now, I know you, I know you folks said yes. I was there when you said yes.
Right, right.
And you said yes to those folks, but we still can't just sit and wait until that, if that yes is going to take another three years, you know, it, it just makes our work really difficult. I, I know you understand.
All right, thank you. Okay, Council, is there, actually, Council President, do you have a motion with regard to the time?
I move to extend the meeting past ten PM.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, extend past ten PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is there a motion before the body regarding the funding?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I will make a motion, but before I get to that, I want to say a couple of things. You know, I think our real solution is to work together to try to figure out this problem. We have a problem, and I'm very happy to see Bill and Dan here this evening, and the other people who have come also to express their concern. And I, I'm glad we're getting this all out in the open, because it couldn't continue the way it is. And so I'm very happy to have that happening. I also want to say thank you to all those folks in Stand Up, and all the other people who volunteered to clean up our city. It would be so, we would be walking in trash if we hadn't got help to clean up the city. And so I want to say thank you to them as well. So, Mayor, I do have a motion. My motion is, I move to allow the Day Center additional time to bring the property in operation into improved compliance with city code and licenses.
Second.
Returning this item for council consideration in the second quarter of 2025.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Council, Stephanie?
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Okay, nay to, I'm sorry.
Nay to continue it.
Yeah, I voted...
Continuing for six months, another six months, is that what it's there?
Second quarter.
Second quarter. It'd be three months.
Just three months.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Honda?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Nay.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one.
Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you for the discussion. It'll be continued, but the hour is late, we need to move. It's item, and thank you very much for everyone who testified. Thank you, everybody who came, appreciate it. Uh, thank you for staff. Item seven, Council Committee and Regional Committee reports, Parks.
All right, from the Parks Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, we met on December tenth. Out of that, the meeting consent items, see-through, I came out of that, and also item nine B on the, on the agenda. Our next meeting will be January fourteenth, a week from today.
All right, thank you. L U T C?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is going to be February third, here in the council chambers. Last night at our L U T C meeting, we moved, uh, forward the, to do a developmental agreement with the LDS Church for their temple, and we had a discussion about the park impact fees on a study, which will be coming through further as we have to be compliant with the State of Washington's rules on square footage and bedrooms. So we'll see a little bit of changes, and that'll be coming through to, through the agendas.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fedrick?
Thank you, Mayor. There was no meeting in December, so our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at five PM in this room, and also available on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. LTAC?
You have no report, and there's no meeting in January.
Thank you. Regional committees?
Thank you. I just want to say, I've been appointed to a few committees with SCA, but one of them is the PSRC Transportation Board, and my first meeting is this Thursday, so I'm rather excited about that. AWC is having a District Thirteen meeting, which was rescheduled from December to January tenth, which is, I think, Friday, from ten, from eleven-thirty to one in Maple Valley at Lake Wilderness Lodge. And you do need to let AWC know if you're coming. Public Issues Committee, or the PIC meeting, is tomorrow at seven o'clock on Zoom. We'll be talking about the SCA legislative agenda, executive director recruitment update, as SCA does not have an executive director at this point, orientation to the PIC and what it is, and updates from cities. Thank you, I can barely talk.
Thank you very much. Council President?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all the folks who brought additional food items during the holidays to the food bank, sincerely appreciated. I know that they appreciated the money that we gave them, Mayor, both food banks. I know that they appreciated the money that we gave them, Mayor, both food banks. Also, council, we are having a retreat in February. I'm going to ask Amy, our assistant, if she wouldn't mind sending out that retreat agenda again, so that if you have anything you want to add, you know, it's coming up quick. So if there's anything you want to add to the retreat, now's the time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Item eight, consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, could be passed all at once. After I read them, I'll ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. Item eight, minutes, December 3, 2024, regular and special meeting minutes. B, 2023, sweet sweep, street sweeping services, boy, that's a tongue twister. Maintenance contract amendment number two. Item C, King County Sheriff's Office Registered Sex Offender Cost Reimbursement Agreement for 2024 through 2025. Item D, Arts Commission Grants 2025. E, Seasonal Day Camp Transportation Services Goods and Services Agreement. F, Parks and Recreation Commission 2025 Work Plan. G, Federal Way Community Center Locker Room Soft Demolition Project Acceptance. H, Temporary Locker Room Plumbing and Electrical Project Acceptance. And I, Federal Way Community Center Pool and Slide Project Acceptance. Counsel, are any of the items you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, council president?
I move approval of the consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
Is there, there's been a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item B, installation of a wind phone at a city park. Jason Gurman, our deputy parks director, will give a brief presentation.
Policy question before you tonight is, should the city council approve installing a wind phone at a city park? This was presented to the parks committee earlier, or late last month, and was pulled from the consent agenda, I think mostly because I made a presentation, and there were items included in your packet, and we didn't have a PowerPoint, or weren't able for the public to see that. So I've kind of put together a little PowerPoint that gives the visual presentation of the wind phone. But part of the packet was the staff report. There was a staff report to the Parks Commission that was presented then back in September, and a little bit of a history on the wind phone. And so the Parks Commission is making a recommendation to install a wind phone. The city council kind of has three options to consider tonight, being approving the proposed installation of the wind phone as proposed, approving the proposed installation of the wind phone with modifications to either the style, location of the wind phone, or do not improve that installation. And so, so the style of the installation is something similar to what you're seeing pictured on the screen. Be kind of a boxer that. There's a consideration of a rotary phone installed in there. The phone is not connected to anything, and it gives people a chance to speak to deceased loved ones, or let go of some grief, many deals for that. And the history of it goes back to Japan after the Fukushima earthquake, and they say the wind carries your voice to whoever you're speaking to. And so what's being proposed is this style of installation, it'd be in that vein. On the proposed plaque, and this gets a little bit of the history of the wind phone, is the phone will never ring, it's connected by love to nowhere and to everywhere, it's for those who have an empty place in their heart left by a loved one. Say hello, say goodbye, talk to the past, the present, the future, the wind will carry your message, and being dedicated by the Parks Commission. And so the proposed location is at Dumas Bay Center. The pin just identifies that, but it's kind of the circle that looks like Target logo is kind of the proposed location for that wind phone. With that being said, you had the report and the history, staff report to Parks Commission. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if we had them.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I...
Councilmember Honda.
I would like to thank Monty and the Parks Commissioner, and the rest of the Parks Commission for bringing this to us. I know Dumas Bay was their first location, and I agree 100% that Dumas Bay is the location. I think this will be a great addition to what is at Dumas Bay, which is a nice, quiet park, and where people can sit, think, look at the water, and reflect on, on why they're using the phone, and be, have a location where they're not going to be interrupted by young children playing, or that kind of stuff. So I think this is the best location, and I'd like to thank the Parks Commission for bringing this to the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walsh?
I move approval of the installation of a wind phone at Dumas Bay Center.
Second.
Is there a motion, a second? Uh, council president, did you want to say something? Okay. Is there a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, a matter passed unanimously.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you very much, Jason. Item C, proposed 2025-26 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Federal Way Police Support Services Association. We'll have Vanessa Audette, our HR director, provide the presentation.
Tonight, the policy question before you is, should the city council authorize the mayor to execute the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Police Support Services Little background, our PSSA union represents 30 of our police support services professionals. Their current bargaining agreement expired on December 31st of 2024. The contract before you tonight is a two-year contract that conforms with all previously provided council authority and direction, and the membership has ratified the tentative agreement before you tonight. This will include wage adjustments in 2025, effective January 1st, that include a 3.5% cost of living adjustment increase for the members, as well as implementation of market salary surveys for four classifications. The total increased cost for 2025 is $260,000. In 2026, the membership will also receive a 3.5% cost of living adjustment on the 1st of January, for a total increased cost of $220,000. Additional summary of changes to this contract include an increase to the annual boot allowance for animal control and transport officers, as well as the addition of an eight-hour floating holiday for this group. We've increased their education pay incentive, as well as the department will be providing department-issued logoed shirts upon recommendation of non-uniform staff. The mayor's recommendation is to improve the, approve the 25-26 collective bargaining agreement with the PSSA. With that, do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Council president?
Oh, I have a motion.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa, good job. Council president?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the proposed 2025-2026 collective bargaining agreement with the Federal Way Police Support Services Association authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
Is there a motion, a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Thank you, Vanessa. Okay, council reports, first meeting of the month, first meeting of the year, Councilmember Safadawson.
He's timing me.
All right, as am I. I'm Jeff.
Okay, no, I have nothing to say, but today is Orthodox Christmas, so actually, that's when we celebrate Christmas, so today is really my Christmas, so just wanted to say that. Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Councilmember McDaniel.
Really just happy to be back with you guys, hope you guys all had a Merry Christmas and happy holidays, and look forward to this year.
Very good. Councilmember Honda.
I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I had a really busy December, and went to a lot of events and programs that I was invited to. I would say I was probably at the pack for five different programs and events, and I, our staff there handled, handled things really well there. We had a lot of people to some of them, and not so many people to others, and the staff was great. The pack looked beautiful. There was a time when we had no Christmas decoration, or, excuse me, holiday decorations there. And now we have some, but I would suggest we have more in the future, and some places for people to sit, which I continue to ask for. We have, I think, four benches. I don't think that's enough to have people sit. Anyway, I'd like to thank Federal Way Cares for Kids, Catherine North and her project to supply toys and other things that, for holidays for children at Wildwood Elementary, and Rainier View Elementary also had a program for families that provided food and holiday gifts for families. And I know there, there are other programs in Federal Way that helped families out at holiday time, and I appreciate that, and thank them for doing that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Tran.
No report from me, just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody.
Thanks. Councilwoman Walsh?
An interest time, keep it very short. A thank you to everyone who during the holidays were more generous with their time, talents, and money to the different great organizations here in Federal Way and elsewhere. Thank you to those who came on both sides of the issue this evening. I think that all of us want to do the, what is best for that population, it's just a matter of difference of opinion on what is best, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Councilmember Dobie, thank you.
You know, I have nothing to report, but I do have one comment. I thought tonight's meeting, and our special meeting, we had great content from citizens that came forward. It's probably the longest meeting I've ever been in on the first day of a year, but I wanted to thank everybody that came, that testified, and the two presentations on the farmer's market and the community market. I thought they were very well prepared. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Council president?
Yes, I, and thank you, Councilmember Dobie. I very want you to be all excited about some of the plans we have coming forward for you. We are going to continue with the farmer's market, that's what our special meeting was all about. For the next year, the city will be partnering and actually taking over the farmer's market. It'll continue in the same place where it's been, but moving forward, we would like to talk about a public market, and how, what that would look. And Mayor, that Christmas tree that we all surrounded and lit is looking mighty sorry sitting there all by itself, so it'd be nice to have, you know, an ice skating rink around it, or some kind of, some public Christmas market going on in this city. So, so we have a farmer's market, and a public market, and a Christmas market, and lots of things to talk about, and so I think...
Yeah, John.
Sorry, John.
I'm taking copious notes, thank you.
And so some exciting community events for you moving forward. And then in February, we're going to have a retreat, and some of these topics we're going to talk about, although they're wonderful ideas, we have to figure out how we're going to pay for them. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're adjourned. Great job.[1769.73]